Good evening, everyone. Let us rise to salute the flag and then pause for an moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Governor's Executive Order issued on March 12, 2020, has authorized the use of remote participation at meetings of the city's public bodies in response to the threat posed to the public by COVID-19 and has issued guidelines for the city's use of remote participation. In addition to having members of the council participate remotely, we've also set up Zoom teleconference for public comment. And if you are on public comment, if you're on Zoom, please do leave the Zoom after your comment. We invite you to watch the meeting over the open meeting portal stream or on CCTV, CCTV Channel 22. And please pay attention to when your name is called. And if you see the raise your hand feature, please press that. So with that, we'll do a roll call of the members who are present.
Counselor Carlon.
Absent.
Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Present. Counselor McGovern.
Present.
Present. Counselor Nolan. Present. Counselor Simmons. Present. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. Present. Counselor Toomey.
Present.
Present. Counselor Zandivan.
Present.
Present. Mayor Siddiqui.
Present.
There are eight members present.
So now we will make sure that everyone can hear, make sure that's clear, the members who are participating remotely, that they're clearly audible in the chamber, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor McGovern, is the proceedings clearly audible to you?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mallon, are the proceedings clearly audible to you?
Yes.
I believe that is all the members that are participating remotely.
Okay. So with that, all of tonight's votes will be by roll call. We do have a submission of the record, which are minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on September 9, 2019. So on a motion by Counselor Simmons for acceptance, we will do a roll call.
On the motion, Counselor Carlon, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan. Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zandivan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, none against, and one absent.
So I wanted to just clarify, you can watch on 22 City View. Didn't mean to say CCTV. So before we move to public comment, I wanted to briefly just say that right now, as we all know, this is an important moment in time with everything that's happening. And I think our number one duty right now is to listen. And we do have many people signed up tonight for public comment. And so I have two motions that I would like to entertain. The first one, given that we do have many members of the public who have signed up and are participating, right now it's about almost 400. I have worked this morning with the clerk and others to plan in advance. And I have called a special meeting for Wednesday at 5:30. And so I would entertain a motion so that we can get through everyone who would like to speak tonight, that we refer all the agenda items that are on our City Council. On that motion by Counselor Simmons, we would need a roll call.
On the motion, Counselor Carlon, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan. Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zandivan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, zero against, and one absent.
And the second motion I'd like to entertain is because we have so many members of the public and we want to get through all of them. We know that public comment states, the rule states three minutes, but we do, as a body, can decide based on the number of people who are signed up, we can limit the minutes. So given that we have almost 400, I would entertain a motion to limit public comment. I think one minute, based on my conversations with a few of you, makes the most sense. So I will entertain that motion. So on a motion by Counselor Simmons, we will do a roll call.
On the motion, Counselor Carlon, absent. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern. Counselor McGovern.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan. Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zandivan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, zero against, and one absent.
So we will now open public comment. And as I've said, based on the situation with COVID-19, members of the public are speaking through Zoom. And as I've said, if you can please leave Zoom after your public comment, that would make it easier for us to manage the flow. And there may be some technical difficulties tonight, so just bear with us. So with that, I will start with the first person who has signed up. It is Sarah Levy. Sarah Levy, and if you can, once you are speaking on public comment, state your name and your address for the record and the item that you're speaking on. Sarah, are you on the line? You just have to, you were muted, Sarah, and now we unmuted you. If you're still on the line. Could you unmute yourself, Sarah?
She's not there. We can go to the next one.
The next person is Chaya Rusk. Chaya, are you there? She's not there either. The next person is Naomi Fireman. Sarah, okay. Okay, Sarah Levy?
Yes.
We hear you. So you have, please state your name and address, and you have one minute.
Yes. My name is Sarah Levy at 52 Pearl Street, Unit 3, Cambridge. Appreciate your time and considering Policy Order Number 7. I believe that the current funding of the police in Cambridge is not the best investment of taxpayer dollars. And I see this every day in Central Square, where when I see that a call for somebody who has passed out in a doorway is met with four separate police officers in four separate SUVs that are idling in the bike lane on Mass Ave, burning fossil fuels, only to call the EMTs and have them come. There's better resources that could keep that person from being in that situation in the first place that we could fund, in addition to a different trained type of person to come and address those calls. When all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. Thank you.
The next person who signed up is, is Naomi Fireman on the line? No. Is Lisa Manning on the line? Lisa, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Lisa. Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address, and you have one minute.
My name is Lisa Manning. I live at 134 Third Street in Cambridge. I'd like to speak on Policy Order Number 7. And first, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to take this time to speak to everyone and for my community members for showing such a strong support here this evening. I'd like to request that the increase in police budget is not only entirely reallocated to community organizations, but that the existing budget be reallocated similarly. We've learned a lot from the evolving protests and cries for justice over the past week. And if we look more honestly, we've learned that over the past years and the past decades. It is that the response of police in times of crisis has an overwhelmingly negative and oftentimes deadly consequence. And by reallocating these resources to community organizations more adequately equipped to handle these crises, we can more safely serve the people of Cambridge and take definitive steps in the fight to eradicate the systemic racism that pervades our policing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who signed up for public comment is Maya Dett Willer. And for those watching, there's going to be a little bit of lag time between the next person. There's a lot, some back work we do at the end, mute and unmute and so forth. So Maya, are you on the line?
Hi, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Maya. I live at 231 Washington Street. I'm right next to Washington Alums, which is a primarily black and brown community. And I just wanted to state, there's been an escalated police presence in the neighborhood that I've been noticing and very little community work I've seen happening. I think this is a great opportunity, now that we're speaking about this, to divert funds from the police budget into more community-led initiatives. Yesterday, I attended the public commentary on Cambridge Commons. And it was an amazing time and also the first time I've ever seen these community leaders speaking about these. And I'd just really love to put the issues they were talking about forward for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have signed up is Justina Lee, followed by Gerald McFarland, followed by Kristen Doyle. We don't see Justina Lee on the line. Is Gerald McFarland there? We don't see Gerald McFarland. Is Kristen Doyle there? Followed by Brian Leonard. So Kristen Doyle is not online. Is Brian Leonard on the line? No. So the next person who has signed up is Marie Ralph, followed by Jimmy O'Reilly. So Marie Ralph is not there. Is Jimmy O'Reilly there? Followed by Hannah Mahoney. Jimmy, are you there? Oh, Jimmy is not there. Hannah, Hannah, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hannah, is this Hannah?
Yes.
Great, yes. Hannah, please go ahead.
Okay. I beg your indulgence, if I might. My prepared remarks are two minutes.
Well, we, you will have one minute. Thank you.
I will have one minute. Okay. Then I think, can I pass and I'll speak at another time?
I mean, we, this is, if you, if you, can you email the rest of your remarks to us?
I can certainly do that.
So yeah, how about you start and then we are eating, reading all our emails. So you're welcome to email.
I'll try to be as quick as I can. All right. Thank you. My name is Hannah Mahoney. I live at 7 Orange Terrace, and I'm a member of Mothers Out Front. I wanted to speak to Policy Orders 7 and 8, as well as to the City Manager's Agenda Item on COVID-19. And I wanted to speak very humbly as a white ally and, I hope, accomplice. "I can't breathe," were, of course, among George Floyd's last words. I wanted to ask you to also imagine, "I can't breathe." An African-American grandmother in the port afflicted with COVID-19. "I can't breathe." A child of color in East Cambridge having an asthma attack because of particulate pollution in her neighborhood. "I can't breathe." A Somali-American mother carrying her infant and pushing a stroller as she walks the long walk from her home in North Cambridge.
Hannah?
Yes.
So that was your minute. So feel free to, please email us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make the connection to climate change and how it affects proportion.
Thank you. The person, the next person we have is Elliot, no, it's Vanessa Banty, followed by Elliot Forman, followed by Pranitha Pramath. Vanessa, are you there?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please, you have one minute.
My name's Vanessa, Vanessa Banty. I'm at 36 Alpine Street. And I am also commenting on Policy Order 7. I just want to support and endorse the idea of not only reallocating the budget for the police department that is proposing the present increase, but considering serious reallocations and defunding in the present budget overall. In looking at the $65 million the city spends to police a town of 100,000 people, it just, there has to be a better way to help invest in resources. I'm a librarian by training, and I know firsthand the incredible difference and positive outcomes that having community programs can make. And I think Cambridge should invest a lot more attention and money into these programs over policing. Thank you.
The next person is Elliot Forman, followed by Pranitha Pramath, followed by Kit Haines. Elliot, are you there?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Hi, please go ahead.
My name is Elliot Forman. I'm a resident of 134 Third Street. I'd like to speak today about Policy Order Number 7. The funds that are on the docket today to attribute to the police could be better reinvested into community outreach and education. There's been years of proven support for investing into youth having longer-term benefits than investing into policing that has actually typically seen backwards growth into the system. Again, always putting more funding into these systems that help portray and continue systemic racism isn't helpful, and there are better places for that money. Thank you.
We will now hear from Pranitha Pramath, followed by Kit Haines, followed by Dominique Martinez.
No, no Pranitha.
There's no Pranitha on the line. Next up is Kit Haines, followed by Dominique Martinez, followed by Benjamin Kane.
Kit, you may speak.
Hello. I'm Kit Haines. I live at 6 Florence Street. I'm speaking on Policy Order 7, and I'm requesting that you don't increase the police budget. The City Council has already seen with the Twitter incident that the police are not accountable to the City Council. There are so many other better places that we can put our social safety net funding. The police are not the best place for this. It's not accessible to everyone in the city, and people don't see the police the same. Thank you very much.
Counselor Carlon has now joined the meeting. Welcome, Counselor Carlon. Next up.
Adam Mayor.
Hi.
Adam Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Carlon.
I just want you to know, I've been trying to get on Zoom since 5:28. And I'm glad to join you, but I've been here since the beginning of the meeting.
Sorry about that, Counselor Carlon.
No problem. Thank you.
Next person we have is Dominique Martinez, followed by Benjamin Kane.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dominic. I live at 216 Norfolk Street. I'm calling in, I'm calling in to voice my strong support for Policy Order Number 7. It is really important that we don't reform police, but also defund and abolish. Police reform programs are ineffective and a waste of money. What we need to do is to take the bloated Cambridge police budget and reinvest in the black and otherwise underserved communities. In this regard, Policy Order Number 7 is a great first step. But Cambridge needs to continue defunding the police and use that money to invest in education, public health, affordable housing, and other social services, services that actually address the roots of crime. Cambridge should also follow Minneapolis's lead and work on building a new system of public safety from the ground up. Until we do this, the systemic racism against black people in police forces will continue to be there, and no amount of reform can change that. Policy Order Number 7 is a necessary first step, but I urge the council to not let up on this issue and to listen to black leaders when they call for defunding and abolition. Thank you for your time.
The next person who's signed up is Anna, oh, it's Benjamin Kane, followed by Anna Nathanson, followed by Alan Sudan. Benjamin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Benjamin Kane, and I live at 210 Harvard Street, Apartment 2R. I am also calling in to speak about Policy Order Number 7. I feel that the times of crisis, like what we're facing right now, are an important and necessary time to reevaluate priorities. And when we make policy in the public sphere, budgets set priorities. And if we really want to come out of this crisis, not just getting back to even, but becoming a stronger city and a stronger community, we need to invest in the infrastructure and the services that truly serve our communities. And that's not policing and law enforcement. What that is, is public health and, you know, community. not policing and law enforcement, but that is, is public health and, um, you know, community services and support for our communities. And so I wanted to voice strong support for policy order seven. Thank you.
The next person is Anna Nathanson, followed by Alan Sudan, followed by Bunty Ganati.
Anna's, um, Zoom cannot be unmuted because she's using an older version of Zoom. Um, that's the message that we're getting. So she would need to upgrade her version in order for us to allow her to speak.
Anna, we'll try to take you later, uh, but I guess it seems that the software you have, it needs to be updated so that we can unmute you. Uh, apologies. So we'll go to Alan Sudan, followed by Bunty Ganati, followed by Yonadav Shavat. Alan?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alan Sudan. I live at 17 Pleasant Place. I'm speaking in favor of policy orders number three and number seven. Uh, the affordable housing overlay has been discussed many times in the past few years, but it's worth saying in light of the present moments, that one of the chief goals of the affordable housing overlay is to fight racial segregation, to allow affordable housing to be built in neighborhoods where, uh, black people have traditionally been excluded due to the unaffordability of housing. In a community such as Cambridge facing displacement, it's even more important that we get this passed. Uh, as to policy order number seven, I'd like to say that, as the previous speaker said, the Cambridge police are not accountable to the city council as we've seen with the Twitter incident, and the Cambridge police force is disproportionately large compared to our population in a time of unprecedentedly low crime. I think the black community should lead the conversation of how much they should be defunded by, but at the very least, we should not increase their budget. Thank you.
The next person who has signed up is Bunty Ganati, followed by Yonadav Shavat, followed by Caroline Fuller. Bunty, can you hear me?
Bunty, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Bunty, we can hear you.
So this is Bunty, okay, great. This is Bunty Ganati. I live at 17 Pleasant Place. Um, I wanted to talk in, uh, order of policy order number seven. Um, I've often seen the negative presence of police in Prospect Street with many different cars responding to pull over drivers and definitely causing a very negative environment. Uh, I want to emphasize that they do not contribute to the well-being of the citizens and a positive community, and that there's other better, uh, areas for police expenditure, um, especially considering that they're such a huge portion of our budget. So, um, support the general, um, direction to, uh, reorient budget towards black community, homeless, mental health, or other resources, and, um, maybe even increasing this reorientation in the future. Thank you.
The next person who has signed up is Yonadav Shavat, followed by Caroline Fuller, followed by William McInally.
Hi, uh, my name is Yonadav Shavat. I live at 216 Norfolk Street. Um, I'm also talking about policy order number seven. Uh, I think that we should absolutely listen to the black community, uh, in terms of the specific policy steps. I simply wanted to, um, express my, uh, the strong endorsement, not just of myself, but of the people that I know for these actions. Um, I, I, I grew up in Cambridge. I have lived here since I was, uh, I was two years old. I've lived in, uh, Upland Road, Essex Street, uh, Ames Street, uh, Norfolk Street, uh, and, and a few other places. And, uh, I know a lot of relatively conservative, uh, folks, uh, white folks, um, who have all really, uh, shown a sea change, um, in the way that they have spoken to me about issues of policing. And so I just wanted to express that the community is very much behind serious action and that I hope that it is taken.
The next person is Caroline Fuller, followed by William McInally, followed by Elizabeth Rundell.
Okay. Hi, my name is Caroline Fuller, and I live at 12 Douglas Street in Central Square, Cambridge. I'm here tonight to support both policy order number three and number seven. I am a member of a better Cambridge, and as such, I am here this evening to thank you for reintroducing the Affordable Housing Overlay, policy order number three. After over a year of public debate and amendments, I hope the Affordable Housing Overlay is now on a path for a speedy passage. I'm also here tonight representing myself in support of policy order number seven, the review of the police department's budget. It is way, way, way past time for police reform. Police unions across the country, including here in Cambridge, have far too much power and use that power to stymie reform. The one tool that is available to our political representatives and is beyond the control of the police unions is the police budget. This budget should be directed toward effectively preventing crime and away from ineffectively.
Thank you, Caroline. If you can, do email your, uh, comments to us via email. Thank you. William McInally, followed by Elizabeth Rundell, followed by Madison Trapkin.
Hi, I'm William McInally. Uh, I live at 12 Douglas Street, Cambridge. Um, I'm speaking both in favor of policy order number three and policy order number seven. Uh, thank you for bringing the Affordable Housing Overlay back, and I hope that you move it toward a speedy passage. For policy order number seven, um, I feel that's really just a first step. I think all of you know me to some degree, counselors and Mayor Siddiqui, and I hope that you would describe me as a pretty moderate person, someone who thinks about issues a lot. But in terms of the police, I have often found in my interactions with them that I am treated as the enemy. And if I, a middle-class, white elderly male, have that impression, to the point where I am most often not willing to call the police for, to report incidents, how do our.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm sorry I have to cut folks off. Um, please do email us. Uh, we're, we are all reading our emails. The next person is Elizabeth Rundell, followed by Madison Trapkin, followed by Rachel Codwell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Elizabeth, please go ahead.
My name is Elizabeth Rundell. I live at 107 Oxford Street in Cambridge. I'd also like to speak on policy order seven. Uh, per the 2021 budget proposal, this increase is being paid for by the residents of Cambridge through their taxes, but the police department isn't a top priority for most Cambridge taxpayers right now. The protests sweeping our nation and the rest of the world, including several right here in Cambridge, have highlighted that the police force is a means to an end that can be reached more safely, effectively, and systemically by investing this money in other critical areas of the community, like the Cambridge Health Alliance, the School Department, and the Peace Commission. It's my hope that Cambridge, like many other cities across the country, will use this opportunity to examine the structures we put in place that propagate inequality and how we can begin the work of dismantling them. Redirecting funding from the police department to other areas of the community would be a meaningful step in this process, beginning with the proposed budget increase for financial year 2021. Thank you.
The next person we've, who's signed up is Madison Trapkin, followed by Rachel Codwell, followed by William Livernoy. Madison is not there. And did you want me to say that, uh, we should ask people to, we're going to ask people to rename themselves as they, as the name they've signed up as, correct?
In order for us to locate you on the list to unmute, you need to be signed in with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment.
You want to repeat that one more time?
In order for us to unmute you to speak, you need to be signed up with the same name that you signed up for public comment.
Okay. So Madison Trapkin is not on the line, but we, up next is Rachel Cadwell, followed by William Livernoy, followed by Samantha Powers.
William Livernoy, go ahead.
William, are you there?
I, yes, I am. Uh, I just want to give my support policy number seven. Uh, I think that for $1 million to be relocated, I would say go even farther than that, um, because I saw that the, the previous, uh, it's gone up by a million dollars since the previous year, and, uh, I'm in favor of, of, of defunding of the base in a gradual manner. I also am in support of, uh, policy number eight. Um, I'm hoping that, though, I'm hoping that that will give more force to, um, sa- saying it's a, saying racism is a public health crisis will give more force to, um, and act more things later on. Um, hoping this will be, this will be announced very publicly. I know that Boston in the past has announced, um, public health crisis, and it was not, it was not done in a very public way. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
The next person who's signed up is Samantha Powers, followed by Joy Wheeler, followed by Kimberly Bowers. Samantha, can you hear us?
Yes, hi. Um, my name is Samantha Powers at 448 Broadway, and I'm speaking on policy order number seven. I would like to request that the increase in police budget be reallocated back into community, community organizations and the current budget be reevaluated in its entirety. There are a lot of programs to consider in investing over policing, including Education Fair Housing and Public Health Commission order in effort to support our underserved communities. The recent Cambridge PD's Twitter mishap clearly shows that despite reform efforts, including investment, anti-bias, and ICAT training, that they do not stand with the black community. Police reform is not the answer, and we should listen to the black community on the best way to de- defund and reinvest the police budget. Thank
Next up, we have Joy Wheeler, followed by Kimberly Bowers, followed by Christie Joy Wheeler is not there. Kimberly Bowers is next, followed by Christie Moore. Kimberly, are you there?
Hi, I'm here. Hello. Uh, hello, my name is Kimberly Bowers, and I live at 30 Lyndon Street. To start, I have family and friends in law enforcement, and this is my first time speaking on the city budget. For policy order number seven, I strongly disagree in the increase in the police department budget. Instead, I implore the city council to thoroughly examine the full police department budget and disperse funds to our various social services for all non-law enforcement tasks. These tasks are a burden on our police officers, and the other departments would be more effective in resolving the problems. Thank you for considering my viewpoints. This is very important to me. I'll be paying attention to changes made.
The next person on the line is Christie Moore, followed by Brennan Harkin, followed by Amanda Chan. Christie, please go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Christie Moore. I live at 425 Broadway. I'm speaking on policy number seven, and I'm here today to ask city council to divest and increase the, sorry, divest the increase in budget funds for the police department and invest in other public safety initiatives that will address health, socioeconomic, housing, and racial inequities more effectively. In addition, I would like the city council members to look to the performance of current community programs, not just in our city, but other cities, and consider allocating existing law enforcement budgets to amplify and/or implement those programs, which are proven to be more effective than policing. We are a turning point in our nation, about 400 years too late, by the way, where systems that were created and built on racist ideals need to be dismantled and reimagined from the ground up. Thank you for letting me speak today.
The next person who's signed up is Brennan Harkin, followed by Amanda Chan, followed
Amanda Chan, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Amanda Chan. I live at 3 Chauncey Street. I'm here to speak in favor of policy order seven. I really believe that if we all want to live in a community that is safer and that is supported by social services, compassion, and generosity, and not with weapons, pepper spray, tasers, and physical violence, I think that policy order should certainly be, uh, approved by this council. I live very close to the incident which, uh, took place in 2018, where many law students at Harvard Law School had to watch the CPD violently beat an unarmed black teenager having a mental health crisis into a coma. Every day I have to walk past that spot and think about the time that the police beat an unarmed black teenager into a coma. I find that to be very disturbing, very violent. I don't think that makes a community any safer, and I highly recommend that the council reflect deeply about what we want the future of Cambridge to look like.
Amanda, for your testimony. The next person we have is Lydia Emmons, followed by Gem Wilder, followed by Veronica Graziano. Lydia, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Emmons, and I'm a resident at 170 Richdale Ave. I'm also here to speak in favor of policy order seven. I'm advocating for the reallocation of all of the proposed $4 million increase, as well as reexamining the base budget for the Cambridge Police Department. Like others, I would like to see these funds reinvested into the systems that support and uplift communities, including affordable housing, public health, youth employment, and education. Furthermore, I strongly believe that the reallocation of these funds should be determined by community members and that that community group have designated seats for young people of color. Um, thank you for letting me speak this evening.
Next person we have is Gem Wilder, followed by Veronica Graziano, followed by Amanda Matson.
Amanda Matson, please go ahead.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Amanda Matson from 1110 Massachusetts Avenue, apartment four. Um, and I would like to speak to policy order number seven. Uh, as a person of color and a member of the city, I'm requesting that the $4 million budget increase, the police department be blocked. I think this money could be much better spent on reinvesting our social services for our underserved people. Uh, as Cambridge has a very large homeless population, I think that we should try and find a better use for this money in serving them and the social workers. And from personal experience, the police do not create the safety that we as a community need. Instead, they create a, a culture of fear. Thank you.
Next, next up, we have Claire Staffer, followed by Grace Cuffner, followed by Gabriel Wildigan. Claire, go ahead.
Hi, can you, hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Claire, yes, please go ahead.
Hello, Cambridge City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Claire Staffer, and I live at 15 Bigelow Street in Cambridge. I've never given public comment before, but I'm deeply concerned with the proposal to increase the Cambridge Police Department budget by 4.1 million, as well as the existing size of the current CPD budget. If this budget is intended to be a reflection of the priorities of the residents and taxpayers of Cambridge, then I request that we instead redistribute this funding into preventative social services, as these are the most effective way to not only reduce crime and violent police interactions, but to also improve the quality of life for all our citizens. I request that this funding be redistributed to departments that we as a city prioritize, namely education, public health, and other social services over police. Um, thank you for the time to speak. I'm only paying attention to changes made and voting accordingly. Thank you.
Next up is Grace Cuffner, followed by Gabriel Wildigan, followed by Isabel Campbell
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah, Grace, please go ahead.
My name is Grace Cuffner, and I live at 69 Chestnut Street. I am in strong support of policy order seven, and I am also in support of diverting the existing Cambridge police budget to public health and safety measures, community outreach, affordable housing, and education. Um, I have volunteered with our primarily black and brown unhoused community in Central Square every week for three years now, and I have never witnessed the Cambridge police helpfully respond to a situation relating to this population. Policing systems around this country have always been a mechanism of oppressing people of color. Imagine if Cambridge invested more seriously in accessible mental health care, conflict resolution counselors, and social workers. This would create a safety net that would resolve a vast number of situations that Cambridge police currently ineffectively attempt to respond to. I am watching, and the world is watching. Thank you.
Next up, we have Gabriel Wildigan, followed by Isabel Campbell Cross, followed by Maria Antifanario, Antifanario. Isabel Campbell Gross, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Isabel Campbell Gross. I live on 15 Erickson Street, grew up in Cambridge, and was educated by our public school system. I'm here to support the local Black community and those communities of color most harmed by the police. I would like to see a commitment to an abolitionist path forward. As a first small step, I strongly support reallocating the full $4.1 million budget increase from the police to support our local community. I will be following your progress closely. Thank you.
Next person who signed up is Maria Antifanario, followed by Michael Roberson, followed by Jessica Sheehan. Michael Roberson, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Michael James Roberson. I live at 94 Richdale Avenue. I would like to speak in strong support of policy order number seven and the reallocation of all of the proposed $4.1 million budget increase to the police department. It has become abundantly clear that something must be done to curb racist police violence. We can't let the proposed solution to this problem be more weak reforms or more rules for police to follow, almost all of which come with built-in exceptions that make them all but impossible to enforce. The issue is that we have too much policing and too much criminalization of poverty. A petition being circulated in Somerville to defund their police department has almost 3,000 signatures, and Cambridge's policing budget is almost four times as much as Somerville's with only 1.5 times the population density. Cambridge has a real opportunity to demonstrate as a city our solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement by divesting funds from the police. Let's not let this moment pass us by. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jessica Sheehan, followed by Avril Absturling, followed by David Bonito. Jessica Sheehan?
Hi, my name is Jessica Sheehan, and I live at 99 Norfolk Street. As it turns out, I support all the policy orders on today's agenda, but number seven in particular, exploring possible reallocation of police department budget increases to public health and safety initiatives in other departments. I would view passage of this policy order as a receipt of understanding by the city council that there will be sustained and organized public scrutiny over how public safety is managed in Cambridge going forward. More generally, I support a transition away from a police-centric model of public safety as soon as is possible, and believe many roles and the funding that goes with them should be moved outside the police department and to other departments. Lastly, I'm thrilled to see the affordable housing overlay back on the agenda. I hope there is a growing awareness that racial and economic justice requires prioritizing the expansion of affordable housing in every area of the city over the subjective aesthetic preferences of a privileged few. Thank you.
Next up, we have Avril Absturling, followed by David Bonato, followed by Estefina Torres.
Hi, this is Avril. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Avril Absturling. I live at 10 Holyoke Place. I want to echo all that has been said from previous speakers around abolition and on this being a small step to completely defunding the Cambridge Police Department and reinvesting in community practices, restorative justice, and social and economic programs that help to uplift communities. As a Black woman with a small son, I am terrified to interact with the Cambridge Police Department, and that makes me really sad to be a part of this community. So I hope that everyone who has the power to do something to change that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who signed up is David Bonato, followed by Estefina Torres, followed by David? Can you hear us, David?
Yes, thank you. This is Dave Bonato. I live at 65 Fifth Street in East Cambridge. I moved to Cambridge two years ago to live in a progressive community that values its residents, and I loved my time here. I want to speak on an opportunity the city now has to uphold its reputation for progressive policy with policy item number seven. So to the city council, I urge you to redirect the proposed $4.1 million increase in police department budget towards measures that promote public health and safety. Commitment to anti-racism in Cambridge requires tangible policy changes away from using policing as a response to our city's problems and toward addressing the human services issues of poverty, healthcare, and education that are underlying causes for so many situations that lead to police intervention and potentially police violence. In Cambridge, Black residents are testing positive for COVID-19 at three times the rate of white residents, and we must take this time to listen to and serve our Black community and to seriously reconsider the way that we fund the Cambridge Police Department. Thank you.
Next up, we have Estefina Torres, followed by Kevin Ballin, followed by Abad Abel? Adele, sorry. So we'll start with Estefina Torres. She's on the line? She's not on the line? Is Kevin Ballin there? Kevin, please go ahead. Can you hear us?
I am.
Hi, we hear you, Kevin. Please go ahead.
Oh, 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 sorry. It's Kevin Donahue.
Oh, and you're at Oak Carrier House?
Oh, no, I.
What's your? Can you say your full name?
Kevin Donahue.
Kevin Donovan, okay. And your address, please?
225 Chestnut Street.
Please go ahead. You have one minute.
Okay. My name is Kevin, and I live at 225 Chestnut Street, and I'm here to speak in favor of policy order number seven. After reallocating the $4 million increase, we should also be examining how to reallocate the rest of the $65 million police budget. As there are several hundred people giving testimony, I've cut most of what I want to say down to a quote from the Movement for Black Lives, as the most important thing is that we listen to what they have to say. The way to reduce police violence is to reduce the scope, size, and role of police in our communities. Furthermore, why would we continue to throw money away on something that we know is not working? We need those resources in schools toward our health and for our futures. Yet, police departments continue to be rewarded for their bad behavior with outsized budgets which allow them to operate with impunity. Thank you.
The next person on my screen seems it's Abad Abel? Not there? Okay. Person after that is Jim Reich, followed by Abby Jamil, followed by Sarah Kayer. Sarah Kayer, please go ahead. Sarah, please go ahead. Are you there, Sarah? Can you hear us? You're unmuted. Sarah, the next person? Is Sarah not there? Okay. Rachel Sandalow Ash, followed by Priyanka Ghosh.
Hello?
Hi, Rachel, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rachel Sandalow Ash. I live at 1156 Cambridge Street, apartment number two. I'm a member of the Bargaining Committee for the Harvard Graduate Students Union, UAW Vocal 5118. I am speaking in support of policy order seven. Last fall, this city council passed a resolution in supporting our union in our effort to secure a first contract. But then, when our union went on strike for the very same purpose, we saw the Cambridge Police Department on our campus intimidating student workers as they walked the picket line. In fact, a number of our Black members and international and immigrant student worker members were afraid to walk the picket lines because they feared suffering from police brutality. These fears were not unfounded. As others have testified, just two years earlier, the Cambridge Police Department brutally beat a Black Harvard College senior and beat him to the ground. I would.
Rachel, thank you for your testimony. I apologize, you have one minute. You can email the council. The next person we have is Priyanka Ghosh, followed by Ashley Thomas, followed by Jessica Bass.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Priyanka, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Priyanka Ghosh, and I live at 335 Huron Ave. I'm here in strong favor of policy order seven. I've seen the city of Cambridge speak out against the egregious violence against the Black community in America over social media and at yesterday's protest. This is a fine start, however, commitment to anti-racism requires prolonged effort and policy change. Giving more money to police at this time is rewarding and further sanctioning police violence rather than condemning these acts. Because of this, I emphatically agree with proposed policy order number seven, which will only approve the budget if it reallocates the entire $4.1 million increase to Black and Brown communities. Anything less than this is unacceptable in combating the systemic racism that's pervasive in our country. The budget for the Cambridge Police is already over $51 million, and even then, this budget is disproportionately dedicated to departments like traffic enforcement rather than any kind of oversight or de-escalation training. Reallocation of police funding towards lifting up Black communities through public services like education, affordable housing, and reformation of the police department is the kind of anti.
Priyanka, thank you for your testimony. Next person who has signed up is Ashley Thomas, followed by Jessica Bass, followed by Calla Calla Walsh, please go ahead. Calla, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Calla Walsh, and I live at 24 Decatur Street. As a young person who pays taxes and contributes to Cambridge's economy yet cannot vote, it is important that I make my voice heard on this issue, why the city should defund the CPD, and why I support policy order seven. I want to see bold action from the council and city manager in not only reallocating the CPD budget increase, but making significant further cuts to the budget's entirety. Providing police with more resources such as body cameras and dashboards will not change the fact that American policing is an inherently racist institution that must be dismantled, not reformed. To really fight crime, we don't need more cops. We need more jobs, more educational opportunities, more community centers, more mental health resources, and more of a say in how our own communities function. Cambridge should be leading the fight against white supremacy and police violence. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. Defunding the CPD is a very important issue, and I will be paying close attention to the changes made.
Next person we have signed up is Adrian Bauer, followed by Andrea Tedesco, followed Andrea Tedesco, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, so I am similarly here in support of policy numbers three and seven. I am a social worker. I work at a large hospital in our community, and I can't more strongly support number three and seven, as everyone has said. And it's not as easy as throwing social workers out on the front line. It's much more complex than that, and we definitely need bigger policy considerations into how to reallocate our budget to increase more awareness and to help our Black and Brown community members. Cambridge needs to do a lot better, and we need to be on the forefront of this, and everyone, everyone, everyone's going to be watching. Thank you.
Next person we have is Sierra Channing, followed by Jay Storozum, followed by Greg Given.
Hi, this is Sierra Channing, and I live at 16 Marie Avenue. I support policy order seven to redirect the increase in police funding to other departments better equipped to handle root issues of poverty, healthcare, and education. I also support a broader restructuring of the budget to transfer police funding to other departments that do not criminalize people in need of assistance. We are asking the police to do too much. Most problems in Cambridge don't require armed officers to interact with the public and put people of color in danger of police violence. We don't need to wait for more incidents like the murder of George Floyd to happen here in Cambridge to learn from them and take proactive steps to reduce the police department and fund social programs that reduce crime while keeping people of color safe from a criminal justice system that we know to be racist. Racial inequalities in Cambridge can't be helped by more policing. We have to fund what communities need to be safe and healthy, like housing, healthcare, and education. We need the council and the city manager to be accountable to control and reduce the scope of policing and rethink our whole policing.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is Jay Storozum, followed by Greg Given, followed by Chris Chackey.
Hello?
Hey, Jay, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jay Storozum, and I live in Avon Hill at 16 Whittier Street. I'd like to state my strong support for policy orders number three and number seven. The affordable housing crisis, broken windows policing, and institutional racism are deeply intertwined, and Cambridge must acknowledge its role in perpetuating racial inequality and then take bold, sustained action to combat institutional racism and police brutality. We must not only reallocate the fiscal year 2021 police department funding increase, but also drastically reduce or eliminate existing police budgets and invest in affordable housing, public health, and other social programs. As Police Commissioner Bard said in his finalist speech in 2017, "Change is certainly coming. You can sit back and get swept up in the wave, or you can get out in front of it and lead." I'd like to call on both the city council and the city manager's office to take the lead in defunding and abolishing the Cambridge Police. Thank you.
Next up is Greg Given, followed by Chris Chackey, followed by Molly Schlossberger.
Hi there. This is Greg Given at 65 Museum Street, calling to voice my strong support for policy order seven. I had a neighbor a few years back who used to work in the psychiatric emergency unit at Cambridge Health Alliance, until she was laid off when that unit was shut down entirely in 2014. And her next job was working as a consultant for the Cambridge Police Department. Now, it's great that the CPD brought her to counsel them on responding to psychiatric emergencies, but the fact that the police department is our primary public resource for psychiatric emergencies is dangerous. It increases the number of police encounters, it increases the likelihood of violence, and it increases the severity of mental health emergencies, no doubt by just the mere presence of police, as we saw when CPD responded to the mental health emergency of a Black Harvard College student with violent force. We've been in a crisis of mental health for years in Cambridge. There's no reason that we should be further funding policing while continuing to ignore that crisis. We have tremendous financial and intellectual resources in Cambridge. We can and should put them to better use to show that we mean, we know that Black lives matter. Thank you.
Next up is Chris Chackey, followed by Molly Schlossberger, followed by Sajil Singh.
Hi, my name's Chris Chackey. I'm at 47 Edmund Street, number 21. I'm here to call on the city council to support policy order three to help address the housing crisis in Cambridge, and also to support policy order number seven to redirect the proposed increased funding for the police department to other measures that would better promote public health and safety in other city departments. COVID-19 has further exacerbated the racial inequality that has long plagued Cambridge, and policing can't solve this. We should fund healthcare, education, affordable housing, community-led organizations, and other initiatives instead. Rather than funding criminalization and surveillance, Cambridge should listen to and invest in Black and Brown communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Next person who is up is Molly Schlossberger, followed by Sajil Singh, followed by Joel Michaels.
Hi, this is Rachel Ross.
Hi, Rachel, please go ahead.
My name is Rachel Ross. I'm a homeowner at 14 Suffolk Street, a psychiatrist, and a neuroscientist, and this is in regard to policy seven. Rather than increase the police budget, I would like to advocate for these and more police-directed funds to be put into city-run, non-police crisis management teams like the Boston Emergency Services Team, best to do the work our city needs. My experience as a psychiatrist in multiple cities with large underserved populations has given me firsthand opportunity to see what's lacking in our treatment models. Defunding police sounds radical until you realize we've been defunding mental health for years. Changes in mental health policy and funding over decades called deinstitutionalization, with initially well-meaning closure of many long-term inpatient psych facilities, has led to significant overburdening of our community-based systems. Because of this lack, police are often called when there's a mental health or truly any social problem. The negative ramifications have disproportionately been felt by marginalized people, especially Black and Indigenous people of color, who end up in custody rather than in care. Police cannot be. Police cannot be social workers in a crisis. We need to shift funds from the police to train mental health workers.
Thank you, Rachel. Please, you can email the rest of your comments to citycouncil@cambridgema.gov. Next person who's signed up is Aavek Chatterjee, followed by Hannah Jacobs, followed by Ian Reynolds. Hannah Jacobs, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Hannah Jacobs, I'm a resident of 72 Quarters Street, Apartment 1, and I'd like to speak on Policy Order... Originally, I, when I looked this up, I found Policy Order 133, but I guess it's also regards to Policy Order Number 7. I want to reiterate the sentiment of my community members and say that, given the systemic racism that is pervasive in police departments all over this country, combined with the stressors of black and brown communities from COVID-19, I think we need to reallocate the proposed budget increase of the police department instead to target resources like human services and development that were the reason, the hiring freeze has been instituted because of COVID-19. I think it's scary, given how important these departments are going to be in the recovery of the pandemic. We need to prioritize services that support communities and don't tear the communities apart. That's the least we can do. Thank you.
Next up is Ian Reynolds, followed by Hay Kim, followed by Colleen Lanier-Crischison.
Hi, this is Ian Reynolds, I'm calling from 6 Marie Avenue. I'd like to call to support Policy Order 7 with a quick shout-out to Number 3 and the AHO. I appreciate everyone who's called in to testify about the violence and injustice they've seen or experienced at the hands of CPD. It's time for the city council to seriously reflect from first principles on whether policing is an effective way to secure public safety and whether it can ever be effective if it comes at the cost of black lives, of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, and countless others getting killed faster than we can even learn their names. This is about CPD, but it's about policing as a concept as well. In Cambridge, we have officers with guns with qualified immunity asked to respond to a wide range of situations in which their tools don't cut to the root of the problem. And that, plus money, plus time, is all you really need for these tragedies to emerge. The city must be proactive so that we're not all back here in five years with tears in our eyes and blood on our hands because a Cambridge police officer that we haven't even hired yet has murdered someone. Realocating these $4.1 million should be just the beginning of our city's exchange of policing for real public safety. Thank you to the Black Lives Matter movement for putting it simply.
Thank you for your testimony, Ian. Next person who has signed up is Hay Kim, followed by Colleen Lanier-Crischison, followed by Moira Cronin, followed by Rocky Martin.
Hi there, my name's Hayan Kim, and I live on 14 Senator Street, Apartment Number 6. This is my first time giving public comment. I recently graduated from a master's in public health program, and calling to support Policy Order Number 7 and Number 3. Both these proposals impact health on a community level. We know that for Policy Number 3, affordable housing is key for the long-term financial fiscal well-being of all Cambridge residents. Regarding Policy Order Number 7, I give support for the defunding of T-RIS Police Department and prioritizing social services. We know that COVID has really impacted our communities of color, exacerbating the conditions now, and I believe that we should, we should turn to community members and decide where to reallocate the funds after discussion and invest in social services that will prioritize the health and safety of community members. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Colleen Lanier-Crischison, followed by Moira Cronin, followed by Rocky Martin, followed by Inga Holdham.
Um, oh, uh, me?
Hey Colleen, please go ahead.
Great, thanks. My name is Colleen Lanier-Crischison, I live at 32 Second Street. I'm commenting on Policy Order Number 7 to demand that the city of Cambridge reduce the police department budget, specifically to redirect back into the community at a minimum, not just some, but all of the proposed $4.1 million budget increase for the department. And I want to emphasize that I believe this should be a first step to begin the much broader work of defunding the police, reimagining public safety in our city, and finding more effective and equitable ways to promote public health and safety. Thank you.
Next person who signed up is Moira Cronin, followed by Rocky Martin, followed by Inga Holdham, followed by Isaiah Usazuma.
Hi, Moira Cronin, 25 Line Street. I am calling regarding Policy 7. I would like the current police budget reexamine and the $4.1 million increase to be reallocated to education, workforce development, youth development, and affordable housing. Like countless other, I find it unacceptable that nearly $66 million is allocated to the police, more than all other categories combined. We are amid a global pandemic and your priorities are $90,000 worth of police vehicles? To echo other speakers, we need deeper form within our police. We know it is not working, we need to be proactive, not reactive like the police. Your priorities should be strengthening and protecting our community through thoughtful engagement. Crime rates will drop if people are receiving the resources needed for their families or individually, not funding for cars that only help the car industry. Our community is depending on you to drastically reduce and properly allocate city funding for a better Cambridge. Thank you.
Next up is Rocky Martin, followed by Inga Holdham, followed by Isaiah Usazuma, Usazuma, followed by Joe Fleming. Inga, please go ahead. Inga, can you hear us?
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Inga Holdham, I'm a resident of 3 Concord Avenue, Number 25. I would like to speak in support of Policy Order 7. I'm calling as an infectious disease epidemiologist. I currently work on COVID-19 research, and I have, in my past, worked on addiction harm reduction in Boston and Cambridge. I'm here to support not just reallocating the increase in police budget, but defunding and reallocated the rest, defunding and reallocating the rest of the budget as well. I believe the funding must be moved to public health and other community support programs, as other people here have mentioned. For example, I live next to Cambridge Common, I frequently see groups of police officers with multiple vehicles confronting people who are homeless and sleeping in the park. This is an unnecessary and cruel escalation and does nothing to help people who need housing and support, and I think that we can do better, I know we can do better. Thank you.
Next person who has signed up is Isaiah Usazuma, followed by Joe Fleming, followed by Julia Talison.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Hi, please go ahead, Isaiah.
Okay, hello, my name is Isaiah Usazuma, my address is 59 Shepherd Street, and I'm a rising sophomore at Harvard. I'm here as the political action chair of the Harvard Black Men's Forum to support Policy Order Number 7. The widespread civil unrest that has taken storm over the past few weeks speaks to more than just the senseless killings of unarmed black people, as the overpolicing of black people in this country has contributed to the vast systemic oppression and injustice they face. The mass incarceration of black and brown folk in this country hides the disregard by governments to create an environment for such people to thrive. We cannot let the increased funding to Cambridge PD cause us to miss out on the opportunity to make Cambridge an even more amazing place to live. Instead, we must reallocate this funding toward more programs and interventions that truly will bring more safety to Cambridge. Increasing police presence does not make us safer, creating better communities will. By reallocating these funds towards creating more comprehensive healthcare, more education opportunities, and more community centers, we can take the pressure off the police to handle situations beyond what they're necessary for, while also reinvesting in our marginalized communities. Thank you.
Next person who's signed up is Joe Fleming, followed by Julia... Oh, no, we already did Isaiah, just now. Next up is Joel Fleming, followed by Julia Talison, followed by Jackson Miller.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yeah, please go ahead, Joel.
My name is Joel Fleming, my wife and I are longtime Cambridge residents who live at 129 Franklin Street, Apartment 141. I'm here to speak in favor of Policy Order Number 7. Two points. First, this order represents the absolute bare minimum. Council should be looking at ways to significantly reduce the police budget far below the prior baseline. Earlier this week, the Minneapolis City Council announced that a veto-proof majority of the council was prepared to disband the Minneapolis Police Department in favor of investments in community-based public safety. That's the kind of bold leadership that this moment calls for, and if any city should be in the vanguard of that movement, it's Cambridge. Second, I'd encourage the council to recognize that the exorbitant costs that are imposed on the city by its police department go beyond the police budget. For example, the police department bills public works for police details working as slackers on construction projects. That is a ridiculous, totally unnecessary expense for roles that can easily be filled by civilians. Thank you.
Next up is Julia Talison, followed by Jackson Miller, followed by Catherine Ly. Go ahead, Julia.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Julia Talison, I live at 41 Locke Street. I'm speaking today on Policy Order Number 7 to support redirecting all of the $4.1 million police budget increase to other city services, as well as examining the existing budget for possible reallocations. I'm a dedicated voter in local elections and a taxpayer in this city, so I'm speaking to leverage that power. I respectfully demand that you take the direction of black community members on how to approach redirecting these funds, but some suggestions include investing in Cambridge public schools, running neighborhood trainings in first aid, crisis de-escalation, restorative justice, establishing a civilian oversight board for the police, and more mechanisms of community engagement and oversight in police operations to create a legal system of accountability, investing in a number of initiatives in the Department of Human Services programs, the Cambridge Human Rights Commission, and the Commission on Immigration, Rights, and Citizenship. Anti-bias training is not enough, it's been tried and it's failed, and we need to begin changing what policing looks like, taking the direction of organizations like MPD-150 to gradually reallocate resources away from the police, and begin sending the best-equipped people to respond to the diverse crises in our city.
Next up is Jackson Miller, followed by Catherine Ly, followed by Laura Wallenstein.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Jackson Miller, and I'm from 25 Dartmouth Street, Arlington. I'd like to voice my strong support for Policy Order Number 7. For a safe and equitable Cambridge, we need to defund the police and invest in our communities. I'd like to start by acknowledging that the movement for abolition of police and the protection of black life is being led by black women and black and brown people, some of whom have been calling for these reforms for decades. Policing as an institution is disproportionately and violently targeting black and brown communities, among others. Additionally, crime is the direct product of poverty and trauma, and to get to the root of it, we need to stop reacting with policing and proactively invest in health, mental well-being, education, economic development, and new public safety system. I urge the reallocation of as much money as possible to be directed towards these social measures. Thank you.
Next up is Catherine Ly, followed by Laura Wallenstein, followed by Lindsay Duchaq. Catherine there, or Laura?
Caroline Hodge.
Hello, my name is Caroline Hodge, and I live at 509 Franklin Street in Cambridge. I'm speaking in strong support of Policy Order 7. I'm requesting that we reallocate the $4 million increase in police budget to social services and reexamine the police department's additional $60 million budget. Let me tell you why. Cambridge is a leader for cities around the world. Other cities look to Cambridge as an example for what a city can be at its very best. If Cambridge continues to fund police at current levels, there is no way we can be a leader for our country. Without drastically changing our police budget and reimagining our entire approach to policing, there is no way we can ensure a community that is safe, equitable, and become a leader once again for cities around the country.
Thank you. Next person we have signed up? I think Michael Robertson we already heard from, so that's like a double... I see Caitlin Duffy, followed by Olivia Breen, followed by Erin Homer. Olivia Breen, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Olivia Breen, and I live at 20 Concord Ave, Apartment 15. I would also like to speak on Policy Number 7, and I want to state my support for redirecting funds from the Cambridge Police Department to other social services. I'm a teacher, so I'm no stranger to budget cuts. I think our taxpayer dollars could be used more productively in education or other community programs than I've had to do more with less for so long. I saw a quote from the mayor of Durham that said, "The safest communities are not those with the most policing, but those with the most resources," and I would like to see Cambridge lead the way in this regard. Thank you.
And next up, we have Erin Homer, followed by Emily Patenood, followed by Courtney Jaeger.
Hello?
Hi Erin, please go ahead.
My name is Erin Homer, and I live at 90 Gose Road. Want to express my support for the proposed Policy Order Number 7 and encourage redirecting funds from policing to other services to the extent possible. I also want to express my support for the affordable housing overlay. Thank you.
Next up, we have Emily Patenood, followed by Courtney Jaeger, followed by Lorraine Thomas, followed by Nia Augberg. Courtney Jaeger, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Courtney Jaeger, I live at 1 Union Street, and I'm speaking on Policy Order Number 7. Please take this time to listen to the black community and account for their needs in this immediate budget decision. I understand that much of the proposed $4 million is legally obligated to salaries, but even in the present proposal, there's a discrepancy of funding police activity that will perpetuate harm versus those that help. 50% of the proposed funding is going to police training that will just uphold inappropriate uses of force disproportionately against the black community, and only 3% of the remaining funds is dedicated to a much-touted new data system, which amounts to less to the average officer's annual salary, and I'm guessing we'll only employ one person. These priorities need to be completely rethought. Please show us they are committed and withhold this funding until a plan can be made with the black community to fundamentally alter and ultimately abolish the police force. Thank you.
Next person we have signed up is Lorraine Thomas, followed by Nia Augberg, followed by Margaret Porter, followed by Carter Nakamoto. Nia Augberg, please go ahead.
Hello?
Hi Nia, please go ahead.
There is an overwhelming sense of entitlement that police and white people feel they need to protect, and it's an underlying narrative that black people don't belong here and their spaces, and the spaces black people occupy need to be controlled and monitored. That being the case, our livelihood and our humanity is always questioned. Every action they have made is intentional, they know their existence is an act of violence against the black community, and that's why they operate the way that they do, because they understand that it is a threat to us, to black people. I hope you all understand the incredible severity of their behavior and the actual violent acts that they have committed and continue to commit to defend the murders of our black and brown brothers and sisters. Racism in this country comes in a very many spectrums and is protected by whiteness, but at the root is a menace to society and needs to be handled properly. I'd like to end by speaking directly to my people and saying that the energy needs to be shifted to building up our communities, because one thing white people do understand is that there is no them without us. White survival will always be at the expense of others. Let us love each other, let us build with each other, grow with each other, educate one another, let us continue to revolt and revolutionize so that we can continue to thrive like we always have and always will.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Margaret Porter, followed by Carter Nakamoto, followed by Jenny, Jenna Berent. Margaret, please go ahead.
Good evening, city council members, thank you for allowing us to speak to policy items Number 3 and Number 7. I would ask you to allocate the budget increase directly into our community through health and human services, funding transportation improvements, environmental planning, and youth programs. These funds will better be served by helping to directly support future generations and provide needed funding towards these programs. I would also request reviewing the entire budget to see where resources will better be served to empowering our community members rather than policing them. Thank you.
Next up, we have Carter Nakamoto, followed by Jenny, Jenna Berent, followed by Priya Shanmugam.
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I'm Carter Nakamoto, I live at 95 Denser Street, and I would like to speak in strong support of Policy Order 7. I urge the council to drastically reduce police funding and work towards abolition. The Cambridge Police Department is unaccountable, violent, large, and frankly terrifying, particularly in its treatment of our black neighbors. It does not improve our community. That the April 2018 beating of a black man was evaluated to be correct is damning. Cambridge needs more appropriate first response, a new vision of public safety, and stronger community programming, not the expansion of a racist militaristic surveillance system. I know we can do better. I also support Policy Order 3 and the creation of more affordable housing. I will be paying attention. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jenna Berent, followed by Priya Shanmugam, followed by Valera Waldivia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hey Jenna, go ahead.
Great, thanks. My name is Jenna Berent, I live at 282 Windsor Street in Cambridge. I'd like to speak in favor of Policy Order Number 7. I'm a public health practitioner who has spent the last 10 years working to decrease health disparities amongst minorities. working to decrease health disparities amongst minorities, and there's no denying that systemic racism is a public health crisis. One way we can address this is to reimagine public safety, and that is why I'm urging Cambridge to significantly cut funding of the police department and reinvest in initiatives of safety, support, and prevention, such as public health, domestic violence, education, and housing. Furthermore, I believe that trained individuals, such as mental health providers, substance abuse coaches, and social workers are far better equipped to address many of the calls that come to the police. By reinvesting in other critical services and utilizing well-trained professionals to respond to public safety needs, we can save lives and make Cambridge a more just place to live. Thank you.
Next person we have is Priya Shanmugam, followed by Valera Valdivia, followed by Michael Sugarman.
Robin Spear, please go ahead.
Robin Spear is next.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, Robin. We can hear you, Robin. Please go ahead.
Robin Spear, and I live at 43 Royal Ave. First of all, I'm here to express my support for the Affordable Housing Overlay. I'm also here to support policy order number seven, which is an important first step in making Cambridge a more just place. It's maybe the least we can do. We need to review the entire budget to reverse the perpetual expansion of the Cambridge Police Budget, which is not making us safer. The police are not the right answer to most public safety problems. We've seen across the country that the police can be violent and unaccountable, and they are a threat to Black lives. Black lives matter. We need to listen to Black community members about how to allocate that money toward more beneficial social services. Thank you.
Next person who signed up is Samantha An, followed by Laura Marcell, followed by Ben Sabath, followed by Christine Chase.
Laura Marcell, you need to update your Zoom software, and then we can call you again.
So Laura Marcell, your Zoom software has to be updated, and then we can call on you. Thank you. Ben Sabath, followed by Christine Chase, followed by Mark Sanchez.
Mark Sanchez, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mark Sanchez, and I live at 24 Sheila Lane. I would like to speak tonight in support of policy order number three and number seven. I would like to see City Council work to drastically reduce or eliminate the police budget overall, but specific to order number seven and in terms of the proposed $4.1 million increase. I encourage City Council to work towards reapportioning those funds towards measures that prioritize education, public health, and other critical social services. Cambridge has a great opportunity here to be a progressive leader in the reduction of policing and to show itself to be responsible to the needs of Black and Brown communities. Thank you.
Next up, we have Natalie Fortbath, followed by Tessa Green, followed by Molly Chase, followed by Rachel Cohen.
Hi, my name is Natalia Fortbath, and I live at 891 Massachusetts Ave in Cambridge. I am a third-generation Cambridge resident and graduate of Cambridge Ringe and Latin School. I'm here to speak in strong support of policy orders seven and eight and tentative support of policy order three, but I question whether it is sufficient as it stands. This summer, I will become a medical student and hope to one day support my community as a primary care doctor. I believe it important for Cambridge to not only pass policy order eight and declare racism a public health crisis, but to go even further and set up an action plan to start addressing this crisis. A first step is passing policy order seven, reallocating all $4.1 million to health, housing, and education, which are more effective in promoting safe and healthy communities. This is just a first step to dismantling a system of policing that was never meant to protect Black lives. I acknowledge I'm not an expert in planning our housing, but I know housing is fundamental to health and that many zoning laws were created to uphold racism and white supremacy. I question whether policy three can do more to increase public housing and allow multifamily housing as a right citywide.
Thank you, Natalia. If you want, please email the remainder of your comments to us. Next up, we have Tessa Green, followed by Molly Chase, followed by Rachel Cohen.
Hi, my name is Tessa Green. I live at 75 Wendell Street. I support policy order number three and the Affordable Housing Overlay. I also support policy order number seven. We should reallocate the proposed increase and reevaluate the existing police department budget and put money saved towards social services. Cambridge can be a progressive leader in policing reduction and demilitarization. Our police currently do a lot of things that other not-militarized community workers could do by reducing our outlay on policing. We can improve our city overall. Please take bold action, beginning with policy order number seven, and thank you all for your time.
Next up, Molly Chase, followed by Rachel Cohen, followed by Crese, Pue, followed by Jay Morgan.
Crese Pue, please go ahead.
All right, my name is Crese Pue, and I live at 60 Laney Street. I'm speaking on policy orders number one, seven, and eight. I'm a PhD student at Harvard and have witnessed firsthand the discriminate and racialized actions of the CPD right here on our campus. As others on the call have already highlighted, in 2018, one of our Black students was brutally beaten and had his head slammed into the pavement by CPD officers when what he needed was mental and medical support. I've also watched the CPD officers have laughed and cheered on white students who drunkenly streaked naked through the streets of Cambridge. Racism is a public health crisis. It's time that the Cambridge City Council stop investing resources into these discriminatory practices and redirect those funds into programming that supports the health and prosperity of our community members, particularly those of us who are Black and Brown. No more investments in policing equipment, no more investments in incremental reform. Reallocate resources protecting, not harming, our community. Thank you for your time.
Next person who signed up is Jay Morgan, followed by Ellen Wang, followed by Musamet Afrin, followed by Julia Blenkow.
Hello.
Hi, Jay, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jay. I live at 8 Carlisle. I have been a part of the Cambridge community for nearly a decade, and I spend a lot of time doing outreach to the homeless population, and they all live in fear and terror of the police department. I fully support redirecting all of the funds from this thing to pretty much anything else. People are pretty desperate for housing. To my knowledge, the waitlist for Cambridge housing can be eight years long, and at some points, it has been, in fact, stopped because of the amount of people on it. I strongly support relocating this funding, and I agree with previous comments that number three is not particularly enough to work with the housing needs of Cambridge. Thank you.
Next up is Ellen Wang, followed by Musamet Afrin, followed by Julia Blenkow, followed by Kevin Greenberg.
Ellen Wang, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Ellen Wong at 140 Elm Street. I am here in support of policy order number seven. As a Cambridge resident and CPS parent of East Asian descent, married to a white man, I will never be racially profiled or brutalized by the police in the way that my Black friends and members of the Black community have been. We need to divest from the Cambridge Police Department. A couple of sessions of anti-bias trainings for an institution that was born out of white supremacy and anti-Blackness will not prevent Black people from dying at the hands of the police. The $4.1 million can instead be reallocated to efforts that will support and uplift not just our Black community, but the entire community. I'd like to suggest returning these resources to Black-led and Black-serving, community-based organizations, as well as training educators and youth workers and culturally responsive de-escalation techniques, in addition to listening to and learning from Black liberation movements, including Black Lives Matter and the Kindred South Healing Justice Collective's Healing Justice Framework. Thank you.
Next person who was signed up is Musamet Afrin, followed by Julia Blenkow, followed by Kevin Greenberg, followed by Joshua Pearl.
Faria Afrin, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Musamet Afrin. I grew up on 151 Washington Street, Apartment 3, and I live in a predominantly Black and Brown community. And I'm speaking in support of this policy order number seven. The current and future city budget does not reflect the needs of the community. I urge you to divest from the police department and invest the $66 million into youth programs, public health, education, and affordable housing. My family has never seen the police as someone they can rely on. We do not feel safe around them. We strongly encourage the city of Cambridge to consider completely abolishing the police department and investing in programs that change lives positively. Thank you.
Next up, we have Julia Blenkow, followed by Kevin Greenberg, followed by Joshua Pearl, followed by Mary Craftwell.
Hi, this is Julia Blenkow at 48 Fairmont Street. I would also like to speak in support of policy number seven and would also like to say that the Cambridge City Council should be abolishing the Cambridge Police Department and redirecting the funds. Police create and cause violence. They do not solve it, especially for Black people, Native folks, and queer and trans people. This money should instead be given to community-led projects, especially those led by Black people in our community that can address the issues of community violence, addiction, and poverty far better than the police ever could. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kevin Greenberg, followed by Joshua Pearl, followed by Mary Craftwell, followed by Emily Rosman.
Mary Craftwell, please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Craftwell, and I'm a resident of 173 Ringe Ave. I'm here to comment on policy seven. As a youth worker in Cambridge, I work with youth experiencing homelessness every day. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we do not have a safe gathering place to fit all of us in a safe way. However, the youth that I work with on a daily basis are outside. They're not given proper support for receiving jobs, employment trainings, mental health, let alone housing. I don't understand how a city that considers itself progressive can have this many people living outside in the Boston rain and snow, while the Harvard Police and the City Police kick them out of public spaces. Homeless individuals are the most targeted by police presence, and we need to focus our money for our citizens and residents on youth employment and transportation and housing and not on a militarized police force that is hurting our community. I call for the abolition. Thank you.
Next up, I have Emily Rosman, followed by Adsandra Perodi, followed by Valerie Bonds.
Go ahead, Emily Rosman.
Emily, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Emily, yes, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Emily Rosman. I live at 31 Concord Ave, Unit 4A. Thank you, council members, for all of your work and taking the time to listen. I'm calling in support of policy seven. I think policy seven is a good first step, but to echo some of the other callers, I think we have a lot of work to do. I'd encourage this committee to listen to Black residents in Cambridge to hear exactly how they need the support and how we should redistribute that $4 million. But generally, I do think Cambridge needs a reckoning with its inflated budget support for policing. I read today that Minneapolis did a survey on 911 calls and found that the majority of callers actually needed EMT support and social workers instead of a police person. And I would urge Cambridge to do the same sort of analysis and rebudget accordingly. Thank you so much.
Next up is Alexandra Perodi, followed by Valerie Bonds, followed by Max Schaefer.
Go ahead, Sasha Perodi.
Thank you. My name is Sasha Perodi, and I'm a resident at 25 Elmer Street. I'm speaking on policy order number seven. I join you today in support of reallocating funding for the police department, and I urge the City Council to push further to disband the police department and allocate those resources and funding to community-driven systems of care. Punishment and violence create more harm than they do good. To prioritize the safety and needs of our community, specifically those of our Black community members and community members of color, is to invest in our communities through mental health programming, through access to adequate, affordable housing, school resources, social services, investing in local business recovery, investing in our artists. While this is a process of re-envisioning the current system we have in place, we have the wisdom and perspective of many leaders, specifically Black leaders and local voices, who have seen the potential for this reality and who know how to get there. I encourage you to listen to them and to make this process community-driven to center those impacted most by police brutality and the system that generates it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person my screen is showing is Alex Pinto, but something may be wrong with...
The next person is Valerie Bonds. Valerie, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Siddiqui and members of the City Council. My name is Valerie Bonds. I live at 808 Memorial Drive. I'm 69 years old, and I have been a longtime resident of Cambridge. First of all, I am for and support of funding our police department. I think that the attempt to defund our police department to minimize the effects of systematic racism is a white-eyed ally, John Brown, misguided attempt to affect change in a system that was created by the Supreme Court, the presidents of our past presidents, and our legislators. Our Cambridge Police Department has programs set up to dismantle racism, not only in the police department, but also to work on excessive use of force. Our Cambridge Police Department can utilize the funding to additional training so that they can share the best practices that we have with places like Minnesota and other places. Defunding our police department is not going to get rid of systematic...
Thank you, Valerie, for your testimony. The next person who was signed up is Max Schaefer, followed by Griffin Andres.
Griffin Andres, please go ahead.
Hi. I would just like to thank you guys for listening to all this testimony today. And I would first and foremost just like to speak to my experience as a kid, having grown up in Cambridge. I have had countless positive experiences with different community groups and in the schools and youth centers across the city. And I can't say I've had many positive experiences with the police of this city in general. It's been very adversarial, the relationship, It's been very adversarial, the relationship, even for me as a white male. The relationship I've had with the police has not been positive. And I also just want to say to Louis that this decision really rests on your shoulders here, and I really hope you do the right thing.
Next person who was signed up is Alex Pinto, followed by Kyle O'Hara, and then Jennifer
Alexander Pinto, go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi, this is Alex Pinto from 37 Gold Star Road, and I want to offer my strong support for policy order numbers seven and three regarding the police budget and the AHO. Both housing and policing are key issues in racial justice, and I hope the council can rise to meet this moment in the world and overcome the entrenched interests that have stood in the way of real change in these two areas in the past, be they police unions or homeowners groups. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person we have up is Kyle O'Hara, followed by Jennifer Martinez, followed by Evan Berry, followed by Juliana Tennant.
Evan Berry, please go ahead.
Evan, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Hi, Evan, yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, hold on, I'm getting on mic. Okay. So I live at, this is Evan Berry, I live at 174 Brookline Street, and I'm speaking in support of policy order number seven without amendments as written, because police violence and anti-black racism have no place in Cambridge. Minneapolis had one of the most progressive policing policies in the nation. However, these policies didn't prevent four MPD officers from murdering an unarmed Black man. What did the Minneapolis City Council do? They pledged to disband their police force and create an alternative, community-based public safety model. We can do that here too, in Cambridge, and I encourage the city council to adopt policy order seven as written and pursue measures to demilitarize and defund, reduce the scope of policing and reallocate funding from the police budget to social and public health programs for the city of Cambridge, because we're in the midst of economic downturn because of a global pandemic, and we need to prioritize expanding our social safety net. And the bloated Cambridge Police Department budget is critically needed elsewhere in our community. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Juliana Tennant, followed by Tamara Harper, followed by Sri Diva Ayu.
Juliana Tennant, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Juliana Tennant at 173 Hampshire Street, speaking in strong favor of policy number seven. This is my first time giving a public comment, and I choose now to speak because I strongly believe, based on evidence, that the only proven way to reduce crime and violent police interactions is to defund police departments and reinvest that money into preventative social services. Cambridge PD's $65 million budget is bloated. For example, Cambridge Excess Military Equipment from the 1033 program, yet a vast majority of crime here do not require weapons to use their job effectively. There is also inflation in the budget to allocate funds towards non-law enforcement tasks, which should be handled by other departments. We need to listen to our Black community members about racial inequalities that cannot be helped by more policing. I ask you to act in favor of the requests of myself and the 250 speakers here tonight and the 1,600 residents who wrote in about policy number seven, and follow the lead of Minneapolis City Council in taking the first steps towards defunding the Cambridge police. Thank you.
Next up, Tamara Harper, followed by Sri Diva Ayu.
Tamara Harper, it looks like we need you to update your Zoom in order for us to be able to mute or unmute you. If you come back in, please raise your hand and we'll try to call on you.
Next up after that is Sri Diva Ayu, followed by Alexander Rutterer, followed by Haley
Hi, this is Sri Diva Ayu of Troubridge Street, Cambridge-born and raised, Ringe alum, city planner and designer. I'm speaking in support of redirecting funds from the proposed close to $66 million police budget to community programs and supportive of the affordable housing overlay, supporting policy orders three and seven. I also propose using a portion of the funds to support Black Lives Matter. Stay safe. Also propose utilizing a participatory budgeting process, centering the Black Lives Matter and freedom, Black freedom struggle, and using funds to translate the budget into different languages so that it can be accessible to more communities. Stay safe, thank you.
Next up, we have Alexander, followed by Haley Haynes, followed by Kimberly Hunt.
Hi, yes, my name is Alexander Rutterer. I live at 119 Harvard Street, and I'm here to support policy order number three and in particular, policy order number seven. This is the first time in my life I've given public comment, but the violence being deployed against the Black community by police across the country warrants from us a bold response, not incrementalism. Commitment to anti-racism in Cambridge requires us to stop using policing as a response to our city's problems, and the way to do this is not reform, but to defund the police. Cambridge should immediately redirect the $4.1 million increase and also cut the $65 million we spend on policing. We have an opportunity to shift those funds towards public health, public works, social services, and affordable housing. The affordable housing overlay is a good first step, warrants swift passage, but we need to do more. Instead of making police try to solve all of these problems with a gun, we will all benefit from such changes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll be paying attention to the changes made.
Next up, Haley Haynes, followed by Kimberly Hunt, followed by Anna McCarthy.
Hello, I'm Haley Haynes of 118 Norfolk Street. This is my first time giving public comment, and I do so for my strong support of policy order number seven. I'm here today as an ally of our Black and Brown communities in battling the pervasive systemic racism that's very much alive today. I'm expressing my support for reducing funding for police and reallocating that funding toward preventative social services and investment in Black and underserved communities. Specifically, I'm calling for a reallocation of the entire proposed increase, as well as a significant portion of the patrolling budget and the full $4.8 million budget for police-led social justice, which should be redirected to community-led social justice initiatives. It is clear that additional police and police funding not enhance public safety and disproportionately affects our Black neighbors through targeted criminalization and unwarranted violence. It's time to stop this investment and as a city to prioritize the safety of and investment into our Black and underserved communities. Thank you to the council for this time to speak.
Next up, Kimberly Hunt, followed by Anna McCarthy, followed by Elliot Stoller.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Hunt. I live at 10 Wendell Street, Apartment 12A in Cambridge. I strongly support policy order number seven because I believe that the $4.1 million increase in the police department budget should instead be allocated towards public health, community support programs, and education and social services. There are so many examples of where this money is so badly needed elsewhere and could help many Cambridge residents. I read through this council agenda summary for this exact meeting and found a perfect example. On the awaiting report list, Report 19-141 from October 2019 recommends hiring a social worker for the Central Square branch of the library. Why can't we use some of the police budget for social workers and other community support? Instead of increasing policing funds, why don't we use that money to tackle the underlying causes of crime, helping to prevent it from occurring in the first place? If Cambridge wants to be truly progressive and lead in repairing the harm that police brutality has caused around the country, it needs to start by reallocating this $4.1 million increase to systemic issues that disproportionately affect Black communities.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up, Anna McCarthy, followed by Elliot Stoller, followed by Olivia Loceado.
Elliot Stoller, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elliot. I live at 375 Walden Street, Apartment 2, Cambridge. I'm speaking today in support of completely reallocating the $4 million away from police funding to social services. But in addition to analyzing entire police budget, I want to speak, briefly speak about personal experience in which I have called 911 and on behalf of a neighbor who I thought was having a drug overdose, 911 sent three police cars and ambulants and the fire truck, which was a completely unnecessary show of force and I think made our community less safe. I think we need to reinvest our money into both communities of color, affordable housing, mental health services, and drug prevention programs. I also think, want to say that retraining programs, I do not believe are efficient, and I thank you for your time and hearing these comments.
Thank you. Next up is Olivia Loceado, followed by Itamar Turner Turing, followed by Nina Mukherjee.
Itamar, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Itamar Turner Turing. I live at 139 Oxford Street. I'm here in support of policy orders three, the Four Housing Act and number seven, which just for variety, want to comment on cameras for police. Other departments that have body cameras include the Minneapolis Department of Police, New York PD, known for their so many crimes that there's a whole Wikipedia article about it. The Seattle Police, who is currently tear gassing people, even though the mayor told them not to tear gas people. Body cameras are not in any way a solution for anything, whereas less funding seems like it might actually help. So I'm supporting the AHO and order number seven.
Next up, Nina Mukherjee, followed by Jocelyn Ting, followed by Julia Propp.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Nina, yes, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Nina Mukherjee from 13 Marcella Street. I'm calling for the city council to use all the power at its disposal, not just to prevent the increase to the police budget, but also to cut the existing police budget. As a person of color, albeit light-skinned, I frequently feel alienated in Cambridge by the culture that's been so shaped by white elites and more materially by the high housing costs. Over the past few decades, there has been a decline in the percent of Black residents in Cambridge from 14% to 11%. This doesn't surprise me, given my own experience and the fact that the police budget has, in just the last decade, increased by a third. Every interaction between police and Black and Brown folks has a potential to reinforce existing trauma or become a new source of personal and communal trauma. The existing $62 million in the police budget could be a force for transformation. Let's go beyond the AHO, which I strongly support, and invest directly in public housing. I agree with many speakers that there are alternatives to policing, and we are in a position to embrace those and abolish the police altogether.
Thank you, Nina. We're going to go back to Tamara Harper, who updated her software, and then we will hear from Jocelyn Ting and Julia Propp.
Yes, my name is Tamara Harper, I live Washington, 19 Washburn Avenue. I am a Black mom with a Black son. I'm also an educator with Cambridge Public Schools. My son is going to be in the world on his own in a few short years, and I need to know that the city of Cambridge is doing everything to ensure his safety. I also had the misfortune of watching a Black man have a mental health episode just two days ago. I called the best team, I called Cambridge Health Alliance, to see if there was any way that this person could get served without calling 911. There was not. I did not call 911. I know that the $65 million budget for the police department could be better used to serve children with universal preschool, which is $22 million a year. And I know that the city budget is supposed to be in place to help city families, and as a Black educator, I know that that is gravely missing from this, from our resources. We can do better. I expect them out to Cambridge, and I hope that you vote to defund Cambridge Police Department. Thank you.
Next up is Jocelyn Ting, followed by Julia Propp, followed by Isabella Gomez.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Ting, and I live at 69 Chestnut Street in Cambridge. I want to speak in strong support of policy order number seven. I grew up in Cleveland, and I remember six years ago when Tamir Rice was killed, that we saw a lot of reports of implicit bias trainings and body cameras, and I thought that this would solve the problem. And now we're here, six years later, and it seems that nothing has changed. We know now that the most important thing to do is to fund public works, like early education and public housing, and defund a force that is not keeping the public safe. So I would be in strong support of reallocating the $1.4 million, as well as, like many have said before me, reevaluating the whole budget of the police department. I think an institution that has been created to oppress mostly Black and Brown lives is not something that my tax dollars should be going towards and something that the city council has a strong responsibility to look at. Thank you.
Next up, Julia Propp, followed by Isabella Gomez, followed by Louisa Parker.
Isabella Gomez, please go ahead.
Hello, I proudly pay taxes as a resident of Cambridge, and I like contributing to my community in that way, and I want to know that the taxes I'm paying are going to fund public schools, free lunch programs, parks, housing for the homeless people that I see every day in Central Square, and not for killing my Black and Brown neighbors in the streets. We need more resources for prevention, we need more resources for the health of our residents, and we need more resources for the education of our youth. We do not need more resources to perpetuate the modern form of slavery that is the prison industrial complex. Thank you.
Next up, we have Louisa Parker, followed by Arianna Lessin, followed by Andrew Hyatt.
Hi, I'm Louise Parker. I live at One Warwick Park in Cambridge, and I am a health policy professor and researcher. I'm urging you very strongly to vote for policy order seven. However, this is just a first step. Ultimately, we need to re-envision how we promote public safety. We're all horrified by the pattern of police racism, brutality, and overreach that exists across the land, and Cambridge is not exempt. Again, we need to rethink public safety. Armed police officers should not be addressing issues such as mental health, homelessness, substance abuse. None of these are crimes. We need staff who are trained to connect people with health and other services in problem-solving, mediation, and all of this without involving the police. And we need to de-militarize our police force to minimize for potential escalation. To determine best how to do this, we need to create an elected community body that represents the city's diversity and amplifies the voices of those most harmed, people of color, especially Black people. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Arianna Lessin, followed by Andrew Hyatt, followed by Elena Glassman.
Andrew Hyatt, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Andy Hyatt. I live at 7 Union Street. I'm testifying in support of policy order seven as written, towards reorientation of funding from policing towards human needs. I'm a psychiatrist, doing my residency at the Cambridge Health Alliance, and I frequently work in the Cambridge Hospital Psychiatric Emergency Service. I strongly support removing tasks from the police that they are not well-equipped to handle, and the most obvious to me is mental health crisis response. Individuals experiencing problematic substance use or a mental health crisis would be better served by a social worker, harm reduction counselor, or peer support specialist than by an armed police officer, and I fear for my Black patients every time they interact with the police. Alternative models, like the Kahoots program in Bend, Oregon, has successfully demonstrated that non-police first responders can fill this role, and I urge the council to look into implementing this model here. Thank you.
Next up, Elena Glassman, followed by Heather Pickerel, followed by Zachary Lieberman.
Heather Pickerel, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Heather, yes, please go ahead.
This is Heather Pickerel at 7 Arlington Street. I ask you to reimagine how you can create a safer Cambridge. Imagine creating Cambridge's version of Kahoots, a nonprofit mobile crisis intervention program that handles 20% of Eugene, Oregon's 911 calls at a fraction of the police's budget. Consider how Los Angeles has redirected $1 billion from the LA County Jail to build a mental health treatment facility. Let me dissuade you from the temptation of budgeting the $4 million for body cameras and training. These reforms do not work and rely on the untrue premises that the police increase safety. You must support policy order seven because Black lives matter. You cannot sustain an institution that persistently harms Black Americans, nor can you compromise their lives by settling for cameras and training. I hope our progressive little city will lead by example. Thank you.
Next up, we have Zacharia Lieberman, followed by Shannon McClintock, followed by Elizabeth
Zachary Lieberman, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm speaking in regards to policy order number seven. I want to say thank you to everyone who showed up to comment this evening and to the council for hearing us out. I'd like to advocate for the thoughtful reallocation of the proposed police budget increase. These funds and a significant portion of the general police budget should be put towards social programs that better support the Cambridge community and alleviate the reliance on police intervention in circumstances where force is not needed. Thank you.
Next up, Shannon McClintock, followed by Elizabeth Roman, followed by Kyle Mercado.
Shannon McClintock?
Hi, I am Dr. Shannon McClintock. I live at 305 Memorial Drive. I am speaking in support of policy order number seven without amendments as written. I work as a pediatric physical therapist in early intervention services and in an elementary school setting. I also volunteer as a playspace activity leader with Horizons for Homeless Children. I have seen firsthand the power of accessible and effective public health, community development, and public education services in fighting the effects of poverty within our community. And I acknowledge that systemic racism has placed and kept many people of color in positions of poverty. In solidarity with the Black Lives Matter campaign, to defund the police and invest in communities, I strongly support policy order number seven. I look forward to hearing how the city of Cambridge will reallocate next year's budget to build a stronger community for everyone. Thank you.
Next up, Elizabeth Roman, followed by Kyle Mercado, followed by Sidney Down.
Hi, my name is Liz Roman. I live at 12 PPD Terrace. I am a recently graduated senior of CRLS and co-chair of the Cambridge Youth Council. Addressing policy order number seven, CYC is in support of redirecting the entirety of the $4.1 million increase in the CPD budget for fiscal year 21. of the $4.1 million increase in the CPD budget for fiscal year '21 and revaluing the $65 million CPD budget altogether. Fiscal year '21's proposed CPD budget is $65 million, and with 280 officers, wages account for 95%, yet training is the least invested in the budget at only 0.5%. The responsibilities of CPD are great, but their 20-week recruit training doesn't prioritize the investment in safety and integrity. If CPD wants to be transparent and responsive to the needs of the Cambridge community, we want to know where their money is going. As we watch police forces across the country use excessive force, abuse protesters in the black community, we hold Cambridge to the same standards to not invest in the combative violent tactics. Thank you.
Next up, Kyle Mercado, followed by Sidney Down, followed by Rachel Lent, followed by Sherry Dekelski. Rachel Lent, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Rachel, please go ahead.
Hi, I live at 4 Cocktail Avenue, and I support Policy Order Number Seven for Cambridge to reduce the police budget. We should invest in public services that build our community rather than armed force that endangers people. Our city faces racial inequalities that stem from historical injustices, and this can be solved by policing. The CPD currently spends 52% of its budget on patrolling, which is $33 million, or seven times as much as than what's spent in social justice initiatives. The city council can change this by defunding police and investing in what communities need to be safe and healthy, which is COVID-19 relief, mental health services, housing, healthcare, healing, cooperative businesses, community centers, and community-led organizations and projects. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sherry Dekelski, followed by Kathleen Turner, followed by Isabel Stephen.
Hi, my name is Sherry Dekelski. I live at 7 Marni Street in Cambridge. I do have a traumatic brain injury right now, so I'm going to do my best. This is my first Cambridge City Council hearing testimony. Most of the people who've spoken have spoken on the topics I intended to speak on today. So where I want to focus my time is just to state that I'm supportive of what people have said, the majority of people so far, and that I really want to request that the mayor work with the city council to prioritize definition of a totally new set of outcomes that are being pursued for 2020, along with defined measures of success, such as the benchmarks that we're looking to achieve across the areas well-understood to be at the heart of public safety issues. So we already know that means poverty, affordable housing, ineffective or underfunded youth programs, access to healthcare, social work, educational programs, youth jobs. And I also want to suggest that we need our city government to be driven by and operated according to clearly stated values.
Thank you, Sherry. If you can, please email the remainder of your comments to the city council. Next up, we have Kathleen Turner, followed by Isabel Stephen, followed by Julia Reddy.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Turner. I live on 61 Plum Street. I am a Latina and an ally of the Black Lives Matter movement, and this is my first public comment ever. I'm in favor of Policy Order Seven. The city of Cambridge should reallocate the $4.1 million budget increase through social services in Cambridge and listen to the black community leaders to determine how the funds should be reallocated. We must also scale back the police force and reduce our present $62 million budget to less than a third. With the scale back in the budget, the city should also prohibit the police to use all lethal and non-lethal weapons and any training associated with them. We must also cease accepting military equipment from the 1033 program. We don't need weapons or police to maintain public safety in the city of Cambridge. Police aren't social workers. Police aren't trained mental health professionals. Police aren't substance abuse, addiction counselors. Public safety is created through more resource and care, not through a weaponized police force. Thank you.
The next person who has signed up is Isabel Stephen, followed by Julia Reddy, followed by Alex Swetman.
Hi, thank you. My name is Isabel Stephen, and I live at 115 River Street, also speaking in support of Policy Number Seven. As another graduate of CRLS, I am intimately familiar with the disconnect between Cambridge's sanctimonious reputation of progressive utopia and the way that Cambridge sustains itself on archaic, oppressive, and racist institutions, which grant enormous opportunity to a select few at the cost of the health, safety, and lives of others. Hypocrisy is on full display as our city council entertains the idea of increasing the police budget in the middle of one of the most widespread civil rights movements in history, which largely calls for the defunding and abolition of police entirely. It is time to move beyond performative progressiveness and make actual change. What good does the Black Lives Matter sign in your front yard do? Who does that serve? Does it make a difference in the daily lives of black and brown citizens who live here today in Cambridge, Massachusetts? It is time to defund and abolish the Cambridge police and reallocate those funds to products that will benefit the community we've ignored for so long. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Julia Reddy, followed by Alec Swetman, followed by Joe Covino, followed by Elizabeth Bavarella. Elizabeth Bavarella, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Elizabeth. Please go ahead, Elizabeth. Elizabeth, you still on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Bavarella, and I live at 28 Sherman Street. I've never given a public comment before, and this is in support of Policy Order Number Seven. I am against the proposed budget increase for the Cambridge Police Department, and in favor of drastically reducing its budget far beyond the $4.1 million. I want to see the city of Cambridge invest in community-led initiatives and safety strategies, especially those working to protect and uplift black and brown people and other marginalized groups, not the police. One of the major issues I want to speak to is that we've come to over-rely on law enforcement and turn to the police in situations where their involvement is unnecessary. Police are not social or mental health workers, nor should they be. Let's invest in mental health care and public health, housing, and education instead of the police. Let's be a progressive leader in police reduction that sets an example nationwide of how to create real, meaningful change. Thank you.
Next up, we have Michael Chen, followed by Lily Hafstad, followed by Maya Talvar Hebert. Michael Chen, please go ahead. Michael, are you there? Michael, if you're speaking, you may need to unmute yourself. Michael, we'll come back to you if you're having some technical difficulties. We are moving on to Lily Hafstad, followed by Maya Talvar Hebert, followed by Sophia Green. Maya Talvar Herbert, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi Maya, yes, please go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Maya Talvar Hebert. My address is 90 Putnam Ave in Cambridge. I am speaking today in support of Policy Seven as written. If it does pass, I hope that the council will make sure the Cambridge black community is asked and listened to about where to redistribute the money to best serve their needs. We are currently at the intersection of a number of crises that are disproportionately affecting black people in Cambridge and beyond. To start with, black people face historical institutional inequalities in housing, education, healthcare hiring, and of course, overpolicing and criminalization. On top of that, black people are getting sick and dying at a disproportionate rate from COVID-19. The infrastructure that we need to address these challenges requires significant investment. That's where we should be spending. Police, on the other hand, do not need more money. The police department is the single largest expenditure in the city's general fund behind the loan repayments. For many of the most marginalized people in our community, policing the less safety, not more. And that's why I'm calling on the city council to support Policy Order Seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Sophie Green, followed by Monique Atkinson, followed by Kate Raphael.
Hello, my name is Sophia Green, and I live at 22 Griswold Street and am a recent graduate of CRLS. Regarding Policy Order Number One, there was a study published in 2019 by the National Academy of Sciences, which for seven months tracked over 2,000 DC police officers who were randomly assigned body cams. It concluded that, and I quote, "cameras did not meaningfully affect police behavior on a range of outcomes, including complaints and use of force," end quote. Furthermore, video footage was not enough to bring justice to Fulando Castile, Walter Scott, Tamir Rice, and countless other victims of police violence. Reforms simply do not get to the root of the issue. This brings me to Policy Order Number Seven, which I urge the council to support. We must begin and continue to reallocate funds away from the police and towards community-based public initiatives. The city budget should in no way be approved without the redirection of these funds. Thank you.
Next up, Monique Atkinson, followed by Kate Raphael, followed by Kyle O'Hara.
Hello?
Hi, Monique, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Monique Atkinson, and I am a resident at 25 Elmer Street in Cambridge. I am commenting on Policy Order Number Seven. Thank you for the time to speak and for the time that so many of our community members have put into this gathering. I want to echo many of their words and calls already shared in this meeting. It is vital that we reconsider our community's overall approach to safety with a critical lens and apply a human-centered approach to redirecting all dollars from our police budget in ways that truly center health and wellness for all in our community, with particular attention to and guidance from black and underserved members of the Cambridge community. This funding can be redistributed to community services that offer us public safety of mind and body during the difficult times to come. Providing funding to the Cambridge Housing Authority for fair housing, to youth programs to ensure positive development, to provide greater support to black and small community-owned businesses through the economic development programs, investing in culturally sound community mental health and wellness resources. Many of the suggestions heard today would be of benefit to our community, and I urge the council to strongly consider this advisement. Thank you for the time.
Next up, we have Kate Raphael, followed by Kyle O'Hara, followed by Cameron Avril, followed by Elizabeth Dengel. Cameron Avril, please go ahead. Cameron, can you hear us?
Oh, yes, hello.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, I'm Cameron. I live at 10 Mellon Street in Cambridge. I'm here because I think reallocating this funding and taking steps towards defunding the Cambridge Police Department in general would make Cambridge a safer and better place for everyone who calls the city home. I think one promising avenue for this funding would be to increase support for the homeless residents of Cambridge. In 2014, the organization Bread and Jam was forced to shut down because it could not raise $150,000, an amount which pales in comparison to how much we spend on policing every year. We should create more groups like this and make sure they never need to close again. But I think another get used to these funds would be to support organizations like Black Lives Matter that are actively working to imagine solutions to our social problems that do not rely on violent policing. Ultimately, I hope the final decision about these funds will be made only after significant consultation with a black community, whose members are the most policed both in Cambridge and in the country as a whole. Thank you.
Next up, Elizabeth Dengel, followed by Alec Henry, followed by Robinson Farrar, followed by Lauren Hardner.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Dengel, and my address is 11 Everett Street, Apartment SG7 in Cambridge. I would like to speak in support of Policy Order Number Seven. As many other speakers have stated, I believe that the $4.1 million budget increase for the police department should be fully reallocated and the overall budget for the police department reevaluated with a focus on complete defunding. That money can be better invested in social services for our community. I'll be following the next steps of the city manager and city council closely. Thank you.
Next up, Alec Henry, followed by Robinson Farrar, followed by Lauren Hardner. Robinson Farrar, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Robinson Farrar. I live at 4 Lawrence Street. I support both Policy Order Three and Seven. We should do everything we can to make housing affordable across the city, such as the overlay and more. The Movement for Black Lives, the American Civil Liberties Union, and people across the nation have called for drastic reduction in law enforcement funding and reinvestment into the communities harmed by policing. We should implement their proposals. We should listen to police abolitionists who have been doing the work to imagine and build alternative community services. The potential and authority for police to use lethal force fundamentally undermines engaging and supporting the community. Redirecting the budget increase should be promptly followed by a complete police budget reevaluation and reduction. Thank you.
Next up, Lauren Hardner, followed by Aditi Guha, followed by Cecilia Bulon. Next, we have Margaret Brenner. Please go ahead, Margaret.
Hi, my name is Margaret Brenner. I live at 20 Chancy Street, Apartment Nine, and I am speaking in favor of Policy Order Seven. I am calling for a deeper analysis of how Cambridge spends its money and to advocate that the $4.1 million proposed increase to the police budget gets distributed to Cambridge public schools, healthcare, affordable housing, mental health, and homeless services, as well as in support of engaging and amplifying the voices of Cambridge residents of color, especially black residents. The use of these funds, as well as the entire police budget, should be under broader review as part of a conversation about how to make our community safer. More police does not mean more safe. Thank you.
Thank you. My screen froze up here, so I think, is it Kevin? Kevin's next, as I get my screen back. Kevin Wentworth, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kevin Wentworth. I live at 45 Pembroke Street, Apartment Two. I'm speaking on Policy Order Number Seven, and I'm stating my support for Policy Order Number Eight. It's time for the city to reduce the funding in the size of our police department, putting this funding toward preventative services to work to reduce crime and violent police interactions. I also strongly feel we need to de-militarize our police force and no longer accept excess military equipment through the 1033 program. These items are not needed in any capacity in our city. This is an opportunity for our city to be a progressive leader in this country, and as other commentators have mentioned, I'll be watching for changes to be implemented and voting accordingly. Thank you.
Next up, on my list is Anna Bulon, followed by Lisa Galucchio, followed by Tashkin Sahit, followed by Abigail Lieberman. Tashkin Sahit Tolgu, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Tashkin, yes, please go ahead.
My name is Tashkin Sahit Toloo. I live on 46 Cedar Street, and I'm speaking in strong support of Policy Number Seven, because I believe we need to radically consider what role, if any, policing should have in our community. Our community is not just in a health crisis, but an unemployment and housing crisis that disproportionately affects marginalized people. It is my understanding, in the $4.1 million increase, $3.9 million are dedicated to hire 43 new police department staff. I am certain those funds would better serve our communities worse hit by the ongoing crises by building positions, by funding positions put at hold at Cambridge Housing Authority and Human Services. I will be following actions on this motion, organizing, and voting accordingly. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Abigail Lieberman, followed by Erin Perez, followed by Gabriel Oppenheimer, followed by Francine Sparks. Erin Perez, please go ahead. Hi Erin, yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Erin Perez, and I live at 46 Cedar Street, and I'm in favor of Policy Order Number Seven. I've been a black resident of North Cambridge for the past two years. I come from a city in the Midwest where the connection between police brutality and systemic racial oppression is less opaque and more obviously violent. As a caseworker in Central Square from the summer of last year until earlier this year, I saw firsthand how a modern city's falsely benevolent police presence functions in a place like Cambridge. The police were a key disruption point between formerly and currently homeless, majority-black individuals that I served in my time as a client advocate. When the police are dispatched on a call that involves a mental health crisis, a substance abuse emergency, homeless individuals, folks with criminal records, or any vulnerable person... homeless individuals, folks with criminal records, or any vulnerable persons, the police are intercepting at a time when more appropriate social services, first responders, and community-led initiatives could be more appropriately utilized. I got to know and care for folks who served their time in prisons and jails only to come out and be denied housing, work, adequate substance abuse treatment, and dignity, all because of previous interactions with police. One of the ways folks are funneled into the criminal justice system. We have an opportunity to-
Thank you, Aaron. If you want, please do email your comments to us and we'll read them. Next up, Gabriel Oppenheimer, followed by Francine Sparks, followed by Julian Stellamites, followed by August Underhill Brooks, followed by John Hughes. And for that, Jotay De Nera. Mason Gloudemanz, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, Mason.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Mason Gloudeman and I reside at 5 Lancaster Street in Cambridge. I'm also a teacher here in Cambridge and I just wanted to speak my favor of Policy Order Number 7 because I strongly believe that our city and community would be much better served by reallocating the police budget to other city and community entities such as educational, social, housing, and health services. I think that it would have a very positive effect on our community. Thank you.
My screen froze again, so who's the next? It's Taylor Billings, followed by Emily Sandler, followed by Becky Alice, followed by Benjamin Simon. Taylor Billings, please go ahead.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Taylor Billings, 63 Museum Street, this is on Policy Order Number 7. Voting yes on this policy order is an easy choice to carry out the long, hard work of racial justice. Diverting funds from an already bloated policing budget to invest in Black and Brown communities could begin to chip away at the hundreds of years of racial inequality. It's common sense. I can't even believe this budget increase was being considered in the first place. If there's a voice in your head or police donations in your bank account saying it's not possible, it's not realistic, I ask you, who is defining for you what is possible? Who is telling you no, it can't be? Is it the institutions that benefit from our current system? Enough, our government, you, need to listen to those amongst us who are most impacted by your policies. We need transformative change, you need to walk the walk when it comes to racial justice. Promises, pledges, and weak reforms don't work. They put Band-Aid solutions over old Band-Aid solutions on a bone-deep unjust system. We need actual reductions in the police budget. $4 million isn't enough, money alone will never be enough, but it's a start.
Thank you, Taylor. The next person who signed up is Emily Sandler, followed by Becky Alice, followed by Benjamin Simon, followed by Rebecca Patekis. Emily Sandler, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Emily Sandler, 16 Magnolia Ave, Unit 2, Cambridge, and I'd like to speak in regards to Policy Order Number 7. It's become painfully clear that policing as an institution has failed to live up to its stated purpose of protecting and serving the public. You know who's serving the public? Caregivers for our youth, our elderly, and our disabled neighbors, hunger relief workers, educators, librarians, transportation and delivery workers. You know who's protecting the public? Medical professionals on the front lines, scientists, researchers, and public health professionals, social workers and addiction counselors, sanitation workers, domestic violence shelters. These are the sectors and services that deserve our funding. These are the people protecting and serving us and Cambridge can set an example for how to expand those services to respond to crisis situations and escalations instead of the police. I want to emphasize my strong support for Policy Order Number 7 since it's an important step in the right direction. And to be clear, this is the first step and it can't be the last. Thank you.
Next up, Becky Alice, followed by Benjamin Simon, followed by Rebecca Patekis, followed by Charmaine Nanjay, followed by Jada Sullivan. Benjamin Simon, if you can please update your Zoom software, then when you come back in, raise your hand and we can unmute you. So, and up next is not Becky, it's, is it Becky? No, okay, is Rebecca Patekis on the line? Or Charmaine Nanjay, followed by Jada Sullivan, followed by Abu Siddiqui? Charmaine N'Ganje, please go ahead. Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening, y'all, my name's- Good evening, y'all, my name's Charmaine N'Ganje, I live at 81 Highland. I'd like to speak on Policy Order Number 7. I've been a Cambridge resident for the last three years and this is my first time making a public comment. I fully support that all of the proposed budget increase be redirected to the community and I urge you to please consider using this funding to invest in housing, education, healthcare, mental health services, and community-led organizations. This would be a good means of investment in starting and supporting initiatives that aim to provide support mentorships to students in underrepresented and undeserved communities. As other people on this call have stated, redirecting these funds would be a great first start. I hope you make the right decision. Thanks for your time, bye.
Next up, we have Jada Sullivan, followed by Abu Siddiqui, followed by Olivia McLennan, followed by Arianna Eisenstein, followed by Charlotte Farrenbach. Charlotte Farrenbach, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Farrenbach, 10 Sumner Road, Cambridge. I'm commenting in support of Policy Order 7 as written. The Black Lives Matter movement has been clear in its call and clear that police reform cannot be a solution to this crisis, that a reform framework allows a racist system to continue mutating and protecting itself and what we need is a total reimagining. Disarm and defund, people with guns should not patrol Cambridge. While I support reallocating the $4.1 million increase, I call on the council for complete defunding and meaningful reinvestment in community care. I also ask for total transparency in police budget, data, and activity, including related to police misconduct and mutual aid agreements. It is unacceptable, we are denied this information and if the city manager is unwilling or unable to pursue transparency, he should be replaced. Last night, something historic happened in Minneapolis, the city councillors listened and then they acted. Now, you need to do the same. Thank you.
Next up, we have David Lung, followed by Sonia Kramer, followed by Simran Verdi, followed by Marissa Voak.
Hello, my name is David Lung and I'm a resident at Fort Cogsville Avenue, number 31, near Porter Square. This is my first time giving public comment to the city council. I am motivated by the hope that Cambridge can put words "Black Lives Matter" into concrete measurable action. I am speaking in favor of Policy Number 7 with a particular emphasis on its implementation and good faith by the city manager. This should be the first of many steps in defunding the police. I am not in favor of incremental police reform as reform measures in other cities have already been proven to be ineffective. Instead, we need to start with a complete rebuilding from the ground up with almost all of the current police department budget reallocated to specialized social workers. Lastly, Cambridge should be a leader in this regard and already we are behind the actions of the Minneapolis City Council. Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have Sonia Kramer, followed by Simran Verdi, followed by Marissa Voak, followed by Abby Howell. Followed by Benjamin- Abby Howell, please go ahead.
Hello, hi, my name is Abby Howell, I live in Somerville, I work in Cambridge. I'm calling to ask in support of Motion 7 to cut out that extra budget, but also I think that you should defund the entire police department. This is my first time ever calling you, I'm giving public comment because I was driven to by seeing these horrific acts of violence perpetuated by the police all over the country. It's all working in tandem, it's a national problem with a local solution. And so the really cool thing is that, like, you are local city councillors have like enormous amount of power to make a decision here that can affect us locally but also the whole country. So I really urge you to act. Thank you.
Next up, we have Benjamin Schulsinger, followed by Sean Halloran, followed by Lauren Sodler, followed by Ezra Rudell. Benjamin, go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ben Schulsinger, I live in 22 Water Street in Cambridge. This is also my first time giving a public comment and I felt motivated by recent incidents to speak on Policy Order Number 7. I believe the Cambridge police do not need $65 million and reducing the size of the police department and putting that money towards preventative social services is the most effective way to reduce crime and violent police interactions. I have a desire for Cambridge to be a progressive leader in policing reduction and feel that Cambridge must stop investing in targeted criminalization and surveillance and fund what Black and Brown communities need to be safe and healthy. Thank you to the council for allowing us the time to speak.
Up next, Sean Halloran, followed by Lauren Sodler, followed by Ezra Rudell, followed by Charlotte Bullard, deputies. Sean Halloran, please go ahead. Sean, can you hear us? Sean, are you there? We don't see you. Next up, Lauren Sodler, followed by Ezra Rudell, followed by Charlotte Bullard, followed by Flora Wang. Elizabeth Patton, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Great. My name is Elizabeth Patton and I'm a resident at 6 Sherman Street, Apartment B. I am strongly in support of Policy Orders 3 and 7 and I would also encourage the council to reconsider the entire CPD budget. As many speakers before me have stated, we are at a moment in history where it is important and necessary to stand with the Black community, defund the police, and reallocate that funding to other city services that would better support our city. Moreover, we are in the midst of a pandemic and an economic crisis that we all know will disproportionately impact our Black community members. I hope the council will reinvest our taxpayer money to public health efforts, education, affordable housing, and other efforts to dismantle systemic racism in our city. Thank you and I look forward to swift action by the council and city manager.
Next up, we have Ziva Sullivan, followed by Amy Kim. Amy Kim, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Amy, please go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to just echo what everyone has said before me. I strongly believe that the police budget should not only be increased but also be dramatically reduced. To not actively work towards the abolition of the police force in light of everything you know about police and police brutality is to be irresponsible to Cambridge residents. Police fundamentally lack the structure, training, and skills to effectively de-escalate such a wide variety of conflicts. I believe that the tens of millions of dollars allocated to the police must be reallocated to community support, public health, housing, education, and other forms of investment in underserved groups if the city of Cambridge truly wants to work towards a more equitable future. Thank you.
Next up, Anna Perlmutter, followed by Allison Graham, followed by Sophie Kay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Anna, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anna Perlmutter, I live at 115 A Pleasant Street and I'm speaking in support of Policy Order 7. I've never given public comment before, but I'm motivated to be here out of concern for the safety and dignity of the Black members of my community. Racial inequities can't be helped by more policing. Instead, we should reallocate the substantial budget to social services that will prioritize the health, education, and safety of community members. Thank you for the time to speak, this is very important to me and I'll be paying attention.
Next up is Allison Graham, followed by Sophie Kay, followed by Mark Kagan, followed by Maryam Ahmed. Sophie Kay, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sophie Kazarian and I live at 5 Lancaster Street. I'm speaking in support of Policy Order 7 and in support of the Black community. I'm against the proposed $4.1 million increase in the police department budget. I believe that this $4.1 million would be better suited to go to other departments in our community such as education, public health, and other social services. In addition, we should reevaluate the current police department budget. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Mark Kagan, followed by Maryam Ahmed, followed by Jean-Luc Boubien, followed by Phil Hardegen. Jean-Luc Boubien, please go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Jean-Luc Boubien, I live at 99 Thorndike Street and I support Policy Order 7 as written. I support and want to echo what others have already said about reallocating the funds to the community. But beyond the conversation of where to best allocate the funds, I think it's also worth noting that when so much of the national conversation is centered around the existing overinflated budgets of police departments across the country and I think increasing the budget now would be a particularly tone-deaf move to the community as a whole. I imagine that such an increase would draw condemnation on a national scale and would be a public embarrassment. When the nation is crying out that the police are not listening to the communities they represent, based on tonight's comments, if we don't pass this policy order, then we're just proving that point. Thank you.
Next up, Phil Hardegen, followed by Brittany, followed by Karthik.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Phil, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Phil Hardegen, I live at 115 A Pleasant Street in Cambridge. I'm speaking in support of Policy Order 7. I'm supporting it because I care about the safety and dignity of Black communities in Cambridge and I don't think that more policing is the best way to achieve this. I think we should be focusing on social services that address the root causes of crime rather than investing in services that are reactive rather than proactive. And I think that this should be reflected in new budget allocations for the city. Thank you.
Next up, Brittany G., followed by Karthik Dharagish, followed by Jenny Stevens, followed by Maxwell McGivern.
Alex Liu, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alex Lev and I live at 279 River Street in Cambridge Port. I'm speaking in support of policy order seven as an ally of the black and brown communities that are most affected by policing. One of the chants at the protests last week was "No good cops in a racist system." There's growing evidence that measures like bias and sensitivity training aimed at improving the behavior of individual cops have little effect in stopping anti-black police violence. If we're serious about reducing violence in our communities, then we should reduce the size of the police department and put the savings towards social services including public health, housing, and education. I want to see bold action, redirecting the entire $4.1 million increase slated for the police in this year's budget would be at least a start. Thanks for listening and I'll be paying attention to any changes that you make. Black Lives Matter.
Jamie Argardias, followed by Ruth Hanna, followed by Juliana Locke.
Ruth Hanna, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ruth Hanna and I live at 25 Sergeant Street. I have not given public comment before and I'm calling in support of policy order number seven. First, I'd like to say that this is a good first step, but it should not be the last. As previous callers have stated, our budget reflects our values as a city, and the fact that the $65 million budgeted for police is more than is budgeted for early childhood spending and housing and homelessness combined does not reflect law. Intense bias training and racist police policy did not prevent the murders of so many black Americans at the hands of police. I believe we need to listen to voices in the black community in Cambridge to decide where to reallocate these funds and instead invest in our communities. And finally, I urge the city council to not stop with this policy order, but rather to follow the legislative lead of the Minneapolis City Council and defund Cambridge Police and reimagine systems of public safety. Thank you.
Next up, we have Juliana. Actually, before Juliana, we'll go to Ben Simon, who's updated the software. Ben, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm on my phone, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Awesome, yeah, Ben Simon, 67 Bishop Allen Drive, and I'm speaking on seven and three. I urge the council to pass policy order seven and to invest the full $4 million in social programs, in particular, public housing. I know from talking to hundreds of people living in public housing while running for city council that despite it being called affordable, many who live there are barely able to afford basic expenses after rent. We have a waiting list that's 19,000 people long. Obviously, our housing program is underfunded, while the police have more than enough money. This reallocating is a step in that direction, but it's a small step compared to the scale of the problem. Then on the AHO, the affordability crisis is evident that the market-based housing system is as much of a failure as a market-based healthcare system. It's not enough to change the zoning and let developers hopefully do the rest. Affordable housing should be the responsibility of the public sector, not private developers, whether for or not for profit. Instead, I'd like to see the city emulate the approach of Seattle Council member Pashama Sawant of taxing big business to immediately build and buy city-owned affordable housing.
Next up, we have Juliana Locke, followed by Simon Steinberg, followed by Elena Sabrino, followed by Katie Lemmons, followed by Alyssa Essalauer, Estha Kohler.
Elena Sabrino, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elena Sabrino. I'm currently calling from my hometown of Flint, Michigan, but I've resided in Cambridge for the last three years while working toward my PhD at MIT. Yesterday, Minneapolis City Council announced their intention to disband their police department and invest in community-led public safety. Policy order number seven is a necessary and urgent measure that Cambridge now needs to take in this historic moment to defund the police. I urge the council to reallocate the entire proposed $65 million police budget to other services, including affordable housing, education, public health, and non-carceral forms of conflict resolution. In my work as a social scientist, I've seen firsthand that policing and even attempts at police reforms do not actually facilitate accountability or harm reduction. Policing by design enables and empowers the anti-black violence we have all witnessed this week and for far too long. The Movement for Black Lives and decades of organizing and research have taught us that the abolition of policing is essential to ending racial injustice. Thank you.
We will go to Katie Lemmons, if she's on the line, followed by Alyssa Isakauer, followed by Allison Griggs, followed by Anna Herka.
Alyssa Isakauer, please go ahead. Alyssa, you have the floor, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Alyssa, I live at 1 Ridgedale Ave. I'm speaking in support of policy order number seven. I want to say thank you for all the others who have testified before me. Your powerful words have covered just about everything that I wanted to say, so I want to emphasize that when it comes to our city's budget, we cannot prioritize the police over needs like public health, housing, and other social services. In our communities, we've criminalized poverty, mental illness, addiction, and so many other things. This is a shameful injustice that we can correct. Cambridge sees itself as being on the cutting edge in many ways, and we should be bold right now. Thank you.
Next up, Allison Griggs, followed by Anna Herka, followed by Stephen Paul.
Anna Herka, you have the floor, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Anna Herka, can you hear me?
Yes, Anna, Anna, please go ahead.
I live at Cambridge at 28 Wendell Street, I'm speaking on policy order seven. I've never spoken at a meeting before. The police force enforces laws with power and authority that comes from the ability to use deadly force. I think this kind of power can give one a sense of security and safety if you believe that there are bad guys out there, you're not one of them, so that you have an armed force protecting you from them, from the other, from the bad guy. I think that everyone needs to reject this sort of fearful, simplistic, and fanciful thinking. It's not true and it's not right. There is a risk that comes with living among other people, but there aren't good guys and bad guys. We need to prioritize government spending that maintains and improves public resources that everyone benefits from and that provides people with what they need to live in the city. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Stephen Paul, followed by Riffati Ravi, followed by Sheila Coleman, followed by Andrew Edmondson.
Andrew Edmondson, you have the floor, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Andrew Edmondson out of 3 Gold Star Court. I'm speaking tonight as an ally to our black and other overpoliced neighbors and commenting in strong support of policy order number seven as it is written. I think this policy order is a great first step, but we absolutely need to rethink the role of police in our city and drastically reduce our almost $66 million police budget. I respectfully urge the council to divest from the police department and take steps towards the abolition of policing as we know it in favor of non-violent initiatives better suited to public health and safety. We need to acknowledge that access to housing, fully funded educational and community building spaces such as public libraries and public health initiatives that include mental health care will be more to protect our community than the police. I hope the council and the city manager can rise to meet this moment and take bold steps to rethink public safety and defund, demilitarize, and abolish the police. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kendra Yeager, followed by David Tissel, followed by Christine Jelstrup.
David Tissel, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Tissel, I am at 26 Flag Street Number One in Cambridge. I'd like to speak in favor of policy order number seven and policy order number three for the Four Bowl Housing Overlay District. I'd like to echo what others have said, that the Black Lives Matter flag in front of Cambridge City Hall is meaningless unless the city puts its resources towards programs that benefit black lives and rather than policing them. Thank you.
Next up, Christine Jelstrup, followed by Kai Long, followed by Josie DeShera, followed by Miranda Cowley.
Andrew McLaughlin, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Andrew McLaughlin and I live at 149 Auburn Street in Central Square. I'm here to voice my support of policy orders three, seven, and eight. Black Lives Matter. As a Cambridge taxpayer and resident of Central Square, I believe that my neighborhood and its residents would be better protected and better served if the police department's increased budget allocation was redirected to increasing mental health services, public housing, education, and free meals. Furthermore, if racism is declared a public health crisis, as per policy order eight, it would enable our city to follow the lead of Minneapolis in building a new community-supported public safety initiative. Police forces in the United States are rooted in the enforcement of the racist, violent, dehumanizing institution of slavery. It's become clear to me watching the police's reaction to nationwide protests over the past few weeks that police departments are diseased institutions that would be easier to abolish and reimagine than to try to reform. A new community-supported public safety initiative could be a source of pride for our city and a source of inspiration for our neighboring communities rather than a source of apprehension, fear, dread, and shame. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Emily Reek, followed by Catherine Wong, followed by Elizabeth Simon, followed by Flora Montero, and then Hannah Quiros.
Emily Reek, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Emily, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Emily Rick, I'm a resident at 102 Edmund Street. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to speak in favor of policy seven and to everyone who's already spoke on this. I urge you to redirect all $4.1 million of the increased CPD budget towards public health and safety measures in consultation with leaders in the black community. I believe this is the bare minimum. I urge the council to further decrease CPD funding, working towards the dismantling of the police and reinvestment in social services, including mental health care, education, job training, childcare, and racial justice. According to the city's annual budget document, CPD employs 221 officers, 38 sergeants, and 19 lieutenants. In short, our city has nearly 300 police officers, yet only reported about 300 violent crimes last year. This is completely unacceptable and there's a critical need to dramatically reduce the size of the CPD. While I believe that defunding the police is the progressive solution our city needs, considerable changes could and should be made to the allocation of resources within the CPD.
Thank you for your testimony, Emily. Please, you can email the remainder of your comments to the council. Next up is Catherine Wong, followed by Elizabeth Simon, followed by Flora Montero.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Wong and I live at 1293 Cambridge Street. Like many of the other Cambridge city members here today, I'm here in solidarity with our black and brown communities to voice my support for policy order number seven. It is abundantly clear that existing police reform measures are not keeping black lives safe. I believe the department's $65 million budget should be redirected to support other departments, including those explicitly designed to support domestic abuse victims, citizens experiencing homelessness, and support for public and mental health. And I hope those funds, their allocation is specifically led by members of our black and brown communities. I want to seize this moment to step forward, to become a leader, and drastically rethink the role of policing in our community, and to see this as only a first step. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Elizabeth Simon, followed by Flora Montero.
Next is Chloe Cunha.
Chloe, are you there?
Hi, hello, sorry, hello, yes, I'm here. Hi, this is Chloe Cunha, I am at 8 Sacramento Street, and like many before me, I would like to voice my support for policy number seven. And like many before me as well, would like to propose that we go even further and aim to ultimately abolish the police. I know it sounds radical, but I think it's radical only if we don't do the homework, you know? There's been decades of scholarship on this from, by the way, pioneered by black women for the most part, Valerie. And I think, you know, this is something that's very important. You know, it goes down to the roots of what we want our society to be, and even though Massachusetts, you know, expanding on it, just not just police but prisons, you know, has the lowest incarceration rate in the United States per capita, it's still higher than most across the globe.
Chloe, thanks for your testimony. You can email the remainder of your comments. Thanks. Next up, Grace Duesberg, followed by Fiona Wood, followed by Suzanne Leir.
Fiona Wood, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hello, I'm Fiona Wood at 204 Franklin Street. I'm also voicing my support for the policy order to reallocate the police budget increase. I live in Central Square and I feel less safe because of the Cambridge Police Department, and I hate seeing the unnecessary substation on Central Square on Mass Ave. It already always has several police SUVs taking up space in the busy intersection. It's my impression that it's there to serve the chain stores and to intimidate homeless people and not serve residents. We've seen across the country that police reforms do not work and only give more resources to police departments. When we consider reforms or alternatives to the police, we need to be careful that those programs don't also perpetuate racism and the criminalization of poverty. Thank you.
Suzanne Leir, followed by Emily Redwood, followed by Iris Lewis.
Next will be Lillian Daigle. Lillian, you have the floor, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lillian Daigle, I live on Gold Star Road Court, and I'm here to strongly support policy number seven to redirect the $4.1 million budget increase from the police department to fund housing, education, and healthcare. In October, I was hit by a car and my bike. After all was said and done, Cambridge Police left me stranded on the side of Mass Ave, crying concussed with a fractured leg and told me to walk home. This was my experience as a white woman. I cannot begin to even imagine the gross negligence and terror they rain on my black and brown community members in Cambridge. At its root, policing is a racist system designed to uphold oppression that cannot be reformed. Attempts at rehabilitating police through implicit bias trainings or body cameras have clearly failed. In order to keep our community safe, we must reduce the scale, scope, power, authority, and strength of the Cambridge Police Department. Cambridge needs to reallocate the $4.1 million funding increase from the police as a first step towards fully defunding and abolishing the police.
Thank you for your testimony. Myrna Taylor, followed by Avery Glover.
Avery Glover, you have the floor, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Avery Glover, I'm a resident at 70 School Street Apartment Two. I would like to speak on policy order seven and in support of reallocating the proposed increase in police budget. This is my first time giving a public comment, but I feel compelled to do so now out of concern for the safety of black and brown community members. I support initiatives to defund the police, demilitarize and disarm the police, reduce the scope of policing, and prioritize other community needs such as education, public health, and transportation. I hope the council will work to address these racial inequalities. Thank you for this time to speak.
Next up, is it Sue Hyde, followed by Jacob?
Sue Hyde, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Sue, can you hear us?
Sue, you are unmuted, go ahead, please.
Okay, Sue, we'll come back to you. For some reason, it's not working. So, is Jacob Gado on the line, followed by Ishan Bat, followed by Nadva Abraham?
Ishan, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Ishan Bat from 305 Memorial Drive.
My name is Ishan Bat from 305 Memorial Drive. I strongly support policy orders seven and eight, as written with no amendments. I'm a graduate student of color at MIT and for the past four years, I've also been a graduate resident assistant in an undergraduate dorm, where I support and promote community for around 90 undergraduates. Given a student crisis, I work with various professionals who are trained in active listening, highest response, mental health, and violence prevention. These resources are fundamental to student health and safety. I urge the city council, as the bare minimum action, to declare racism as a public health crisis and to redirect all $4.1 million to measures that promote public health and safety in other departments so our community can better support those in crisis. I will be organizing and voting accordingly. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Nadwa Abraham, followed by Melanie Snyder. Melanie Snyder, you have the floor, please go ahead.
My name is Melanie Snyder and I live at 10 Center Street. This is my first public comment. I would like to voice my strong support for policy order seven and the complete reallocation of the $4.1 million as a first step towards remedying our deeply racist institutions, and I support the movement to abolish the police. As someone who is working towards becoming a therapist, I find it stunningly awful that people who need and deserve compassionate, comprehensive mental health care and other human services are instead often victimized by the police when anyone in human services knows these situations require training and empathy. And as a white person, I cannot fully comprehend the horror and pain our country and police have inflicted on black people, both nationwide and in our own city. But it is the duty of all white people to support the black community and raise their voices. Speaking here today is one of the steps I can take to start rebuilding our community into a place where people, especially black people, have access to comprehensive, compassionate social services from trained and educated employees. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Bradley Dickinson, followed by Jan Kazmarik, followed by Victoria Murray, and then Peter Farlow. Also Elena Glassman, Katya Zin. Katya Zin, please go ahead. Katya Zin, you have the floor, please unmute yourself. Katya, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Katya Zin. I'm testifying in behalf of public order number seven. I believe that the $4 million should absolutely not go to a broken system that is only ultimately going to be used to further traumatize Cambridge citizens. And it needs to go directly into the communities that the police have continually actively harmed. And I think that fundamentally, our system of policing is so intrinsically flawed that any amount of money that is channeled into it right now is directly in violation of their job to serve and protect. And I can say personally, I can only speak for myself, but I'm here in support of Black Lives Matter. And I can say for myself, as someone even who has white privilege, the way that the cops treated us at a peaceful protest.
Thank you, Katya. Dan Eisner, followed by Emma Gilfix, followed by Mike Jin, followed by Phil Cook. Dan Eisner, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Dan, go ahead.
Policy order seven sounds like a sensible measure to redirect money from the Cambridge Police Department. But as always, the devil is in the details. I support it, but I urge you to carefully consider what it would mean in practice. Regarding policy order three, I strongly support the affordable housing overlay. Our built environment is not immune from the effects of systemic racism. Previous generations of Canterburyians established exclusionary zoning in our community because they wanted their neighbors to look only a certain way. It's disgraceful that, a century later, it is still being used to ensure that some neighborhoods remain exclusive and wealthy. The AHO is one small step that city council can take to work toward undoing this ugly stain on our legacy. Just yesterday, a couple thousand Canterburyians gathered at Cambridge Common in support of racial justice. Achieving this is a massive undertaking and we should be under no illusion that the overlay is anything other than one very small thing we can do. But it will help. Thank you.
Next up, Emma Gilfix, followed by Mike Jin, followed by Phil Cook. Mike Jin, you have the floor, please go ahead. Mike, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mike Jin. I live at 279 River Street and I'm speaking on policy order number seven. I don't support the budget increase and I support diverting funds from the Cambridge Police Department towards social services. This will better address the inequities in our community and also reduce the overextended scope of policing. Cambridge should follow the examples of Minneapolis, LA, New York, and other cities in taking action towards defunding police and abolition. We can't ignore this opportunity for us to uphold the image that we project as a progressive city. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and this issue is very important to me. I will be following it closely. Thank you.
Phil Cook, followed by Ellen Weylonas, followed by, go ahead. Ellen Weylonas, please go ahead.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Ellen Weylonas. I'm a homeowner at 2508 Mass Ave. I'd like to speak on policy order number seven. Like many speakers before me, I want to see Cambridge be a progressive leader in policing reduction. This is a great progressive city and I want to see us follow the lead and be a leader for other cities moving in this direction. I'd like to see us move funds from the police budget into programs that will address the needs of our communities of color. I volunteer for Citywide Senior Center once a week delivering groceries to folks who are food insecure. And nearly every person I meet when I'm visiting homes to deliver is a person of color. It's mostly black women. Racial inequities and inequalities, like the ones we have in our city right here that I see every week, cannot be helped by more policing. But they can be helped by investing in social services, education, mental health programs, and community programs that have been shown to address the basic societal problems, of which crime is only a symptom. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and yeah, thanks.
Sarah Acor, followed by Renee Liselos, followed by April Mendez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Sarah, go ahead.
Great. My name is Sarah Assure and I live at 245 Cambridge Street. This is my first time giving a public comment. I was motivated to do so because I strongly believe we need to reduce the police presence in Cambridge. It is for this reason that I'd like to voice my support for policy order number seven. Our police force is already allocated $65 million annually. This is the second highest line item in our city budget. In this coming year, the police budget is slated to increase by $4.1 million. This money should instead be used to fund preventative social services in other departments. Such initiatives better serve this community as they are able to effectively reduce crime through nonviolent early action. More policing does not translate to a safer Cambridge. We need to ensure people of color are able to live here without fearing for their lives. We should therefore rethink how we approach public safety so that all our residents feel safe and welcome in Cambridge. Thank you for granting me time to speak. I would closely be.
Thank you. Next person we have is Renee Liselos, followed by April Mendez, followed by Samuel Tenka. April Mendez, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is April Mendez. I live at 56 Cedar Street. I'm speaking on policy order seven. Echoing what others have said before me, I think reallocating the entire $4.1 million police budget increase into community resources is a good first step. But as you're hearing today, your constituents are calling for change, not incremental reform, but large-scale change. Condemning police brutality and addressing issues of systemic racism in the city of Cambridge does not translate to more funding for the Cambridge Police Department. It also does not mean additional training, retraining, or reformation of the CPD. We must ultimately defund the Cambridge Police. Investing these funds instead into community organizations that work to improve improve access to healthcare, increase affordable housing options, and other social services. This is how we, as a city, actively work to end police brutality and support and uplift our communities of color. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Samuel Tenka, followed by Connor Donovan. Samuel, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sam Tenka of 70 Pacific Street, here to respond to Valerie Blonde's prior remarks in POR number seven. I'd like to alert the council to the fact that sensitivity training in police departments likely has little effect. What I found as I examined the research literature on diversity training is that, time and again, researchers have aimed to and failed to reject the hypothesis of training's inefficacy. Liatell 2016 finds that racial bias tends to decay to inefficacy only 24 hours after training concludes. In fact, Kaiser Tell 2012 finds that diversity training lends a false security that actually reinforces the anti-black status quo. These findings are consistent with the meta-study of Palac and Green 2009 and Chang et al. 2019. In short, de-biased training does not work. De-biased training does not work. More radical change is needed. I hope the council will support POR number 133, which is also order seven on the agenda. Thank you.
Next up, Connor Donovan, followed by Jesse Greenberg-Greenfield. Jesse Greenfield, you have the floor. Jesse, are you there? Jesse Greenfield, please unmute yourself. We don't see Jesse. We'll put you back on if we see you later, Jesse. Sorry about that. Next up, is it Natalie? Next is Lisa Hollywood. Lisa, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hollywood. I live at 257 Pearl Street, apartment one. I want to voice my support for policy order number three, for affordable housing. As an urban designer and architect, I recognize that we can or that we can and must build more housing in our community. I also want to voice my strong support for policy seven, calling for the reallocation of the $4 million increase in the police budget. This echoes many others and I hope this is a first step in a larger effort to defund the police department. The police are not providing safety and security and are instead perpetuating systemic racism. I urge the council to redirect police funds to affordable housing and community services, particularly those geared to our black and brown communities. Thank you.
Next up, we have Seth Gordon, followed by Adam Gould, followed by Jay Yesselman, and then Amy Haley's. Adam Gould, you have the floor.
Hi, sorry, I have some technical difficulties. Hi, my name is Adam Gould. I'm at 35 Ray Street and I'm a freshman at Cambridge in July. Every day, we see, I see police mistreating my black and brown classmates. And I know that this issue does not directly touch student, school resource officers, but it does touch on the wider racism that cops in Cambridge perpetuate. But I also see my classmates being kicked out of their housing, especially during COVID-19. And I urge you to divert the funding away from police and into the pockets of students with rent relief programs and things like that so that we, yeah, so that we're housed and taken care of during this really hard time and just for the rest of, yeah. Thank you. I yield my hand.
Next up, we have Jay Yesselman, followed by Amy Haley's, followed by Guy Fish, followed by Karen Sheehan. Amy Haley's, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amy Hales. I live at 17A Forest Street, apartment three. I'm speaking in favor of policy order number seven. In my seven years, sorry, 12 years in Cambridge, I've never given a public comment before, but this issue is very important to me. I would like to see us take action to drastically defund the police. Police exist to use force and violence to address problems and they disproportionately use that force against black and brown people. It's our obligation as a community to solve problems without force and violence whenever possible. Therefore, we should drastically decrease the amount of funding we provide for policing and reallocate that to projects and initiatives that are shown to better serve the community. Thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you. Guy Fish, are you on the line? Followed by Karen Sheehan, followed by Brian Coughlin, followed by Jalen Bernard.
This is Guy, can you hear me?
Yes, Guy, go ahead.
Thank you, this is Guy Fish. I live at 26 Shea Road, never given a public comment before, but as several of you know, my wife and I have three black kids in Cambridge. Speaking in support of policy order number seven, I'd like to focus on the numbers, the economics, and why the policing budget makes no sense. First, as to the $4.1 million increase, as seen on page 76 of section five, 97% of the increase, almost all of it, is to increase salary and wages. Second, that payroll increase is not due to hiring more police, it's for the same 329 persons. So this is a 6.6 pay raise. At the time when most Americans are thankful not to be furloughed, the economy is in recession and the value of policing is under scrutiny. Third, I want to debunk the myth that more is needed and more is better. Cambridge is at a $55-year-old low in terms of crime, down more than 5% since the previous cycle. Finally, as to the base budget of $61 million for 120,000 residents, that's $500 per capita expenditure. Urban Institute data shows 65% of the states spend less than $350.
If you're gonna, you're welcome to email your remainder of your comments. Thank you. Karen Sheehan, followed by Brian Coughlin.
Hi, my name is Karen Sheehan. I live at 9 Buckingham Street. This is my first time giving public comment and I'm here to speak on policy order number seven. I'm here to voice support for reallocating the police budget and prioritizing education, public health, and safety, and other social services needed. I'm urging you to listen to the black leadership in this country and invest in services that effectively address systemic racial inequalities in our community, including the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on the black community and other communities of color. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
We have, next up, Brian Coughlin, followed by Jalen Bernard.
Hi, my name is Brian Coughlin. I'm a resident of 2386 Massachusetts Ave. I'm speaking today on policy order number seven and further for the defunding of the police department. Believe that we need to reinvest in education, public health, infrastructure, other social services, all of which receive far less funding as of now. Police are expected to ask as social workers, but are equipped with guns, handcuffs, pepper spray, surplus military gear through the 1033 program, none of which is well-suited for these roles. And we cannot solve the problem of inequality with more policing. We need accountability for our police department for the insistence on addressing problems post hoc instead of proactively. I hope Cambridge can uphold its progressive identity by being a leader in police reduction and reinvesting in communities and programs that work to lift everyone. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Jalen Bernard, followed by Rob Belkner, followed by Marina Fisher. Jalen, go ahead.
Hey, how are you doing? Yeah, my name is Jalen Bernard. I live at 130 Cambridge Park Drive in Cambridge. I am calling on behalf of, I believe it is number seven. And I am not in favor of this because I believe that the Cambridge Police does a very good job at what we do. And I feel like, in terms of policing, community policing, and what have you. So I believe that we need to continue to fund our police department so they can continue to do non-biased trainings with our police department and continue to grow. So I feel like we need to support our police department and if not, give them more money so they can continue to do training and help officers serve the city as best as they can. I just want them to stand up for a fucking shot.
Next up, we have Rob Belkner, followed by Marina Fisher, followed by Malika Moses. Malika Moses, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Malika, please go ahead.
Sure, thank you. My name is Malika Moses. I'm a Black woman, born and raised in the port. I'd like to speak on, speak on behalf of Janet Moses and the Moses family in support of Policy Order Number Seven. We'd like to thank Councilors Zondervan and Sabrina Wheeler for their courageous stance that the city budget is a moral document that reflects what we, as a city, truly value. We have six suggestions to share. Number one, reduce the police force to reflect the national average of hires for cities with at least one hundred thousand residents. The national average is sixteen point eight officers. For every ten thousand people, Cambridge has a twenty-four point nine number, ratio, for ten thousand people. While reducing the police force, we must preserve jobs for all minority officers with ties to the community and give them more leadership roles on the force. Number two, require that all new hires live in Cambridge and all previous hires who want to relocate do the same. Number three, require elections to vet members of the Police Review and Advisory Board and review current members for anti-black biases. The board established, was established to reflect the community, but it currently does not. We must ensure that white women with racist Amy Cooper-like mindset stay off the review board. The same is true for men. Anti-black biases are not limited to white people, so it's not enough to put a personal color on the board without also vetting for anti-black biases. Number four, inventory the military hardware that police depart, that the police department harbors and demand that all equipment be returned to the federal government, including the three armored tanks that the police have. Number five, disarm the police in multiple ways. Study the UK model of billy clubs rather than guns. Eliminate the use of chokeholds and other overly aggressive and life-threatening tactics. And lastly, number six, rename the department. Words matter, so in closing, we propose that the department be renamed the Department of Public Safety.
Thank you, Malika, for your testimony. Email the rest of your testimony. Next up is Meg Cantwell, followed by Owen Barron. Meg Cantwell, please go ahead. You need to unmute yourself.
My name is Meg Cantwell. I live at twenty-seven Market Street, and I'm speaking in support of Order Number Seven. This is my first public comment, but given the landscape of recently serviced events around our Black and Brown brothers and sisters, I am motivated to share my thoughts with the council. The police militarization extends beyond Cambridge. I want to see firm and steadfast action to demilitarize and disarm Cambridge, do not require officers to have access to military weapons gained through the ten thirty-three program. I encourage the council to reallocate a significant portion of the funds of the police department's sixty-plus million-dollar budget to the programs that our communities need to heal and thrive. As an engineer in energy efficiency, I know that Cambridge is capable of progressive leadership, but that progressive leadership should extend to the police department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
And Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
I'd like to make a motion that we take a five-minute recess.
We will do a, Ms. Stevens requesting ten minutes. Is ten minutes okay?
Yes, thank you.
So we'll do a roll call on a ten-minute recess.
On the motion, Councilor Carlow.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan. Absent. Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We'll be back at nine ten. Thank you. Noemi, is Meg Cantel? We are, we just heard Meg Cantel, right? Is it Meg Cantel or Owen Barron?
Next will be Noah Toyonaga.
Noah Toyonaga? Noah Toyonaga, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself. Don't think we, there's Noah anymore, huh? He's there? Are you there, Noah? Can you, can you? If you can unmute yourself, then... All right, we'll come back if he comes back. Uh, is Stephanie Crichton on the line? Or Jay Peterson? Amanda Yulstein?
Jay Peterson, please go ahead. You have the floor. Jay Peterson, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
He's not there anymore. Amanda Yulstein, are you there?
Amanda Uxstein, please go ahead.
Amanda, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amanda Uxstein. I live at eleven thirty Cambridge Street, and, um, I'm speaking in pulse, in favor of Policy Order Number Seven. First of all, thank you, guys, for giving everyone an opportunity to speak tonight. I spent a lot of time today reading the Cambridge budget plans for 2021, and it was only reinforced to me that Cambridge is an incredibly progressive city, putting focus on important and inclusive-ish initiatives. Knowing this, it's disappointing to me that we are only talking about redirecting the increase of funds to the police department, not looking at the entire budget that's given to the department year after year. Like others on this call, I think we need to make a much larger, make this a much larger conversation about following in the footsteps of Minneapolis and defunding the Cambridge Police Department. The money should be redirected to establishing programs that put this money directly into the pockets of those who need it and to end the cycle of racism and oppression. I hope that Cambridge can continue to prove itself as a progressive and racially inclusive leader that we can be proud to live in. Thank you.
Okay, we have a few people to go back to. We can start with Laura Marceau.
Laura Marceau, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Hi, Laura Marceau, I'm five fourteen Windsor Street, and I'm talking about Policy Order Number Seven. It is your job to allocate this money to places that will benefit the residents of Cambridge. Increasing the policing funding by 4.1 million is problematic because inherently, police do not keep Black people safe, and they will never, whether we are in the South or right here in Cambridge. It also means that you are actively choosing to support an institution that disproportionately affects the livelihoods of Black people in a negative way. There is no reform, there is no fixing the system when its foundation is built on racism. The only way to combat is to choose to invest in Black and Brown communities and listen to our needs. The first step is to defund the police and place that 4.1 million elsewhere, and then the next step is to abolish the police. Thank you.
After that, we have, is Jay Peterson on the line?
Jay Peterson, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself.
Jay, are you there?
We do not hear Jay. Noah Toyonaga, are you there?
Noah?
Noah, you have the floor. You just need to unmute yourself.
Stephanie Crichton?
Stephanie Crichton is not on.
Okay. Is the next person who is on Adam Hayward? Or Jill Oliver Myers? Or Yanessa?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Yanessa, please go ahead.
My name is Yanessa Deshakramtan and I live at 216 Norfolk Street. I'm an urban planner and also the policy lead for Sunrise Boston, a movement dedicated to fighting the climate crisis, which includes fighting racial injustice. I'm here to support policy orders number three and number seven. For policy order number three, if our city is really committed to racial justice, we must do everything we can to ensure that black and brown families can afford to live in Cambridge, which includes building more affordable housing. For policy number seven, I would like to point out how Cambridge prides itself as an innovative city at the forefront of progressivism. And others have said before me, the police does not make the city safer. I would like to see the police department abolished and the funding reallocated to services that help communities of color and working-class families. If the council feels the solutions to replace the police do not exist yet, I trust that Cambridge has the resources to do the innovative work to create these solutions. Thank you.
Next up, we have Claire Burns, followed by Connie Cho, followed by Shilpa Suniha.
Claire Burns, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Claire, please go ahead.
Hi, hello, my name is Claire. I live on Pearl Street and I work on Quincy Street in Cambridge. I would like to address the policy order number seven specifically to the purpose of the police budget and the increase of the 4.1 million for FY21. I ask that you block this increase to the police and redistribute these funds to human services across the board, as well as social services. With the reduction of police, I want to introduce you to the Kahoots program that is effective in Eugene and Springfield, Oregon. They have hired mental health workers and social workers as first responders. They respond to one in every five calls. LA County has a similar program. The LA sheriff has announced that he, in his statement was, "If not for the mental health workers who were hired as consequence to the protests against police violence, multiple people would have been shot." I ask of you, Cambridge, please let's be progressive. There are programs already in existence. We can do this as well. Thank you.
Next up, Connie Cho, followed by Shilpa Suniha, followed by Melissa Revert.
Shilpa, please go ahead. You have the floor. Shilpa, I'm sorry.
Shilpa.
Thank you. My name is Shilpa Suniha. I live at 5 Chancis Street. Simboll, thank you for listening. You are the face of change, as should be the city of Cambridge, which is why it makes no sense that the Cambridge Police Department spends 52% of its budget, $33 million, on patrolling alone. The culture of patrolling targets black and brown communities. As a brown woman, I have feared for my friends, my fathers, and my own safety. We are the same people who are doing the blue-collar jobs that provided the essential services during the COVID crisis. Policing and threatening communities that have been suppressed, looted, and uprooted for many generations is evil. This is not the way forward. And I know that as Cambridge, we will welcome a future where we will share the same opportunities. That is the only way we will feel safe. Thank you.
Next up, we have Noah Toyonaga. Noah, are you there?
Noah, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Noah, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Noah Toyonaga. I live at 103 Josephine Avenue, Somerville. I'm a graduate student at Harvard and I would like to speak in support of policy order number seven. Recent events remind us that the police represent a specific and often lethal threat to black people. These moments in lives refers to the historical systematic failure of policing as an institution. Evidence both analytical and anecdotal reveals the extent to which police training, procedure, and organization are diametrically opposed to the well-being of communities to whom they are ostensibly beholden. It should be noted that mere reforms such as bias training and use of body cameras or civilian review are insufficient for preventing police violence. We should rather be supporting social services, public health, and educational resources that serve the needs of black people. To this end, the council should ensure that black folks lead and approve the redistribution of funding. Further, while the present redirection of budget is productive, the council should take measures to actively defund the Cambridge Police Force, which presently represents the second-largest allocation of city budget after education. I would like to see the council take radical and necessary steps to reducing the Cambridge Police Force.
Thank you, Noah, for your testimony. Next up, we have Melissa Revert, followed by Matthew Shapiro, followed by Caroline Gottwells.
Matthew Shapiro, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Matthew, please go ahead.
I think now especially, the city council can take a stand for racial justice by significantly defunding policing and investing in black and brown communities, starting with cutting the least transparent, most harmful parts of the CPD budget. There are many moves that the council people can take to move Cambridge in the right direction and we're really looking for you to be a leader and to start cutting the funding, especially where it is harming the community the most. Active change can sometimes be hard to create, but we are looking to you to make the right decision and the decision that's being pushed upon by all of the people that have called in and emphasize their beliefs and the reasons why they vote for you as the council people of Cambridge.
Next up is Caroline Gottwells, followed by Ashruf Ramen, followed by Matt Tom.
Matt Tom, you are next. Please go ahead.
Hello, Cambridge City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Matt Tom and I live at 417 Carmelo Maderos Avenue, Unit 4. I'm concerned with the proposal to increase the Cambridge Police Department budget by $4.1 million. I feel the police department has been forced to wear too many hats and act as a poorly performing band-aid for public health issues we have ignored for too long and we need to address. By reallocating the police budget to social services and community-based agencies, I believe we can better serve our residents and grow our community. I request that this funding be reallocated to support real solutions to community desperation, specifically creating more affordable housing, empowering education, and increasing access to social services. Thank you for the time today.
Next up, we have Kena Udeviki, followed by Sam Miller, followed by Morgan Wimsley.
Kene, you have the floor. Please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Kene, please go ahead. Kene, we can hear you. Are you still there?
Kene, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, Kene, please go ahead.
I'm sorry about that pause. Okay. I'm sorry, no, I wasn't ready for you guys. Okay. My name is Kene Udeviki. I was born and raised in Cambridge. I'm also currently one of the school adjustment counselors at the Cambridge Street Upper School, where I've worked for the last nine years. I've worked as a mental health practitioner for close to 19 years. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, Betsy Pevall, ELA teacher at CSUS, and 29 other CSUS staff members. Our comments are in regards to the policy order resolution number seven. At CSUS, we strive daily to be anti-racist educators and work to combat the school-to-prison pipeline by dismantling oppressive systems operating within our classrooms, our school, and our district. Although CPD also needs to continue to examine its policies and practices, and I hear the sentiments of those before me, if you truly are from Cambridge and have children in the system, you know the value and essential role school resource officers hold in Cambridge. They will be negatively impacted by this resolution.
I apologize, we only have one minute. If you can please email the rest of your comments to the council, we'll read them. Sam Miller, followed by Morgan Wimsley, followed by Melinda.
Morgan Wimsley, you have the floor. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Morgan. I'm a resident at 24 Concord Avenue. I'm here as an ally to the black and brown communities who have been most affected by policing. For far too long, American communities have used law enforcement as a way to monitor people living in poverty with mental health issues, specifically in communities of color, and criminalize the effects instead of investing in its people. I call for bold action by the city of Cambridge to redirect the entire 4.1 million proposed increase of police funding towards more preventative efforts, education, social services, public health organizations. Also call for a reduction in the scope of work by police to remove all non-law enforcement-related activities and a full reassessment of the budget to allocate towards more appropriate departments. And I urge you to create a new line item in what's left of the police department to create restorative justice practices in our community. Thank you for your time.
Melinda Kraus, followed by Gabe Colombo, followed by Jessica.
Next will be Erin Blackwell. Erin, you have the floor. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Erin Blackwell. I live at 1-Ear Hart Street. I want to voice my support for policy order number seven, as well as any and all additional efforts to reduce the current size and budget of the police department and reallocate these funds to other measures that promote public safety and address underlying issues in the community like poverty and the lack of affordable housing. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next up? My screen is frozen, Noemi.
Charles Franklin, you are next. Please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Charles, go ahead.
Good. So, real quick first, move the AHO forward. I'll comment more on it next time. So, I am a black man and as a black man, whenever I see an armed police officer, I fear for my life. Every single time, I look at that gun, look at the officer, and I think, okay, what am I going to do if he looks at me and has some thought about me? I practice my mind. What am I going to say? How to telescope my moves? My father told me at an early age, the police officer tells you to do something and it's not literally jump off a bridge, you do it. That is a conversation a lot of black fathers and mothers have with their black sons. And that's one of the most effed-up things, ever. That's my life. That's the life of every black man in this country. Thank you.
Next up, we have Vale Aliu, followed by Ernest Venner, followed by Emma Price.
Ernest Venner, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Ernest Venner. I live at 225 Walden Street in Cambridge and I'm speaking in favor of policy order number seven. I'm a local Jewish educator and as a white transgender person, I'm here in solidarity with black trans people whose narratives of police and gender-based violence are too often erased. I oppose the $4.1 million increase to the police budget. Racist police violence doesn't just happen in other cities, it happens here in Cambridge too. The city council must stop investing in targeted criminalization and surveillance and investigate how to best support and fund what the black and brown community in Cambridge needs to be safe and healthy. Some examples might be COVID-19 relief, housing, healthcare, treatment, cooperative businesses, community centers, community-led organizations, and projects. We know that transformation to our country's racist police system must happen on the local level. I'm honored to be part of this conversation and urge our city council to play...
Thank you, Ernest, for your testimony. Emma Price, followed by Jessica, followed by Richard Demas.
Hi, my name is Emma Price. I live at 225 Walden Street, Apartment 2A, here in Cambridge. I am here to support order number seven as a first step to defunding and ultimately abolishing the Cambridge Police Department. My hope is that at least the proposed $4.1 million addition be allocated to services that will support Cambridge's black and brown community. I'm an educator. I am proud to know Mayor Siddiqui from college and proud to have been able to vote for her. I work as the lower school diversity, equity, inclusion, and global education practitioner at Buckingham Brown and Nichols School here in Cambridge. While I came here only to speak for myself as a Cambridge resident, I feel it is imperative to act for racial justice each day and to strive to be a model for the students I serve. The city council must stop investing in targeted criminalization and surveillance and fund what the black and brown community in Cambridge needs to be safe and healthy. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak.
Next up, we have Jessica Perdomico, followed by Richard Demas, followed by Townsend Colan, followed by Nolavit Mugilagatu.
Nolavit Mugilagatu, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nolavit Mugilagatu and I'm calling from 305 Memorial Drive. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who's still here and to all the council members that are doing this at 9:32 PM. I personally am a recent graduate and a current employee at MIT and I am a black woman. I have been in the US for only five years and those last five years have been pretty traumatic to the black community at large. I believe in, I'm calling in to support the policy seven as is, because I think it's really important to invest in these communities and I believe that that is fundamentally different from investing in their policing. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dehir Ega, followed by Carolyn Majid, followed by Danielle Wild, or Sam Zulith, or Thomas Ellison?
Carolyn Majid, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Carolyn Majid, 71 Reed Street, in support of policy order seven. I'm very grateful to all the people who've spoken tonight and I hope we can find ways to keep organizing going forward on these issues. As Black Lives Matter calls for the defunding of police and condemning its militaristic operations against community members, the proposed 2021 Cambridge budget is not only a 4.1 million increase to the police budget, but includes $1 million for a tactical militarized program. I urge the council to eliminate the entirety of the 4.1 million increase and to reallocate the funding to other programs that promote public health and safety. Then let's radically reimagine how we can move toward a public safety system that eliminates racism, militarized policing, coercion, and violence. Let's elevate the voices of black and other minority community members both to develop and carry it out. The Minneapolis City Council is just committed to such a process. I hope we're at a historical juncture in which Cambridge and other cities can do the same.
Thank you. Next up is Danielle Wild, followed by Sam. So actually, we have Abad is on via phone. Abad, are you there?
Okay.
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, yes, my name is Abdul Adal and I'm I'm bound to be the police force of the city and also that the city now from the police.
We're having a hard time hearing you. If you want to call back...
Hello, can you hear me?
Continue.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, please continue.
Yes, I'm saying, yes, ever since I was young, I'm 20 years old, ever since I was young, I've been assaulted by Cambridge police and all that and I know a lot of other people that I have... all that, and I know a lot of other people that have. I've been assaulted by police in juvenile custody, I've been assaulted by police in adult custody. It's not, it's not a good investment. I believe that that $4 million needs to be invested into something for the public and into the communities to help them and to help them grow and expand. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is Danielle Wild on the? Wild? Wild, followed by Sam Zulith.
Danielle Wild, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Danielle Wild, and I live at 353 Hartford Street here in Cambridge. I want to speak about Policy Order Number Seven. I'm a student in Leslie's Masters in Clinical Mental Health Counseling Program, and I've spent the last nine months interning at a Child and Adolescent Partial Hospitalization Program that serves many children, I mean, excuse me, many Cambridge families. There's a serious issue with the criminalization of mental illness, especially among people of color. I want to see serious relocation of funds, and I think we should prioritize education, community outreach, and mental health services over police. Supporting our communities should be our priority. Racial inequalities cannot be helped by more policing, but greater mental health support, rural community outreach, and education can. We have some of the brightest minds in the world in this city, let's embrace that and rise to the challenge, thank you.
Next up is Sam Zulith, followed by Thomas Ellison. Who? Is Gabe Colombo on the line?
Gabe Colombo, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Yes, hi, this is Gabe Colombo, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Gabe Colombo. I live at 16 Leland Street in Somerville, but I'm a student at the Harvard Graduate School of Design, and I have a vested interest in the well-being of the Cambridge community. I'd like to voice my support for all the policy orders, but especially Number Seven. I support an absolute minimum, the first step of redirecting the $4.1 million police budget increase, if not far more, the police budget toward essential community services like education, libraries, housing, and mental health, that actually build our social infrastructure, address the root causes of crime, and most help Black and Brown people. I'd also like to voice my support for Policy Order Number Three and the 100% Affordable Housing Zoning Overlay. I have a background in urban planning, and it's important that we all understand the racist past and present of exclusionary zoning and housing policy. We can't protest racism on one day and resist new affordable housing in our neighborhoods on another. Allowing and encouraging affordable housing to be built in all neighborhoods, especially those from which Black and Brown people have historically been excluded, is an essential part of fighting systemic racism. Thank you.
Next up, is it?
Next is Molly Shulman. Molly, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Great, hi. My name's Molly Shulman, I live at 104 Magazine Street, 31 I'm also testifying in favor of the City of Cambridge passing Policy Order Number Seven, following the leadership of Black and Brown folks rising up across the country, calling to defund the police. I believe it's time for Cambridge to follow in Minneapolis's footsteps in reimagining safety in our city. It's unacceptable that the Cambridge Police Department has the second highest allocation of the city's budget, more than Human Services, Transportation, and the Cambridge Health Alliance. As the organizers from MPD 150, a group organizing on the ground in Minneapolis, share to fight crime, we don't need more cops, we need more jobs, more educational opportunities, more arts programs, more community centers, and more of a say in how our community functions. It's with this in mind that I'm urging the city council to become a progressive.
Thank you, Molly. Next up is Isaac Diablo, followed by Alex McHugh.
Next will be Ellen O'Brien. Ellen, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ellen O'Brien, and I'm at 5 Craig East Circle. Regarding Policy Order Seven, I'm asking Cambridge to get rid of proposed increases and work towards the reduction of the budget and scope of CPD's work as a part of an active effort to end violent police interactions for Black people in this city. I would like those funds to go towards preventative social services that effectively serve this community. The first time I ever walked past City Hall, I was pleased to see the Black Lives Matter banner, and now I'm asking my city council to use our city money in a way that truly makes this community safe for Black residents, and aligns with the progressive movements for whom the council shows public support. Thank you for listening.
Is Ellen Jaquith on the line, or Erin Chadwick?
Ellen Jaquith, you have the floor.
My name is Owen Jaquith. I grew up in Cambridge, but I since moved to Providence, Rhode Island, but I wanted to be here anyway, to speak to the community I grew up in. Cambridge likes to talk about being progressive. Now we have a chance to do something actively progressive. You're asking the wrong questions, asking whether or not to increase the police budget in the next fiscal year, asking whether to throw more money at the problem of policing. Money for training and money for body cameras don't change the fact that the police don't help people. We should be dramatically reducing the police budget and reinvesting in programs that actually help people. It's possible and necessary to do more while following the lead of Minneapolis and disbanding the police entirely. Thank you.
Is Erin Chadwick on the line, or Mark Richards?
Mark Richards, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I can't hear you, but it looks like I'm talking, so I'm gonna go. This is Mark Richards, I'm at 4 Aberdeen Court. I'm speaking in support of Item Number Seven on tonight's agenda. In the past several years, my family has addressed the city council and school committee numerous times to request increased attention and funding regarding social and racial inequities in Cambridge. Now, in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic and a nationwide spotlight on continued police violence against communities of color, the urgency surrounding these issues has never been greater. Cambridge should be leading the nation in demonstrating that there are alternatives to ever-expanding police budgets at the expense of community development and social programs. My family is not anti-police, nor do I believe that the policy order is anti-police, but I think the policy order is a common sense acknowledgement that it's the city's responsibility to consider budget options that directly meet the needs of our citizens, especially communities that have been historically victimized by state-enabled inequality. And we should be prepared for this.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person, Mark, your time is up, thank you. The next person is Anna Henchman, followed by Piper Winkler.
Hi.
Hi, Anna, please go ahead.
Okay, great. I'm Anna Henchman, 85 Fairweather Street, and I'm, I support Policy Order Three, Seven, and Eight, but I'm here to talk about Seven as an essential but insufficient first step. And I definitely believe that Black and Brown communities should take the lead in reimagining what an earlier speaker described as a Department of Public Safety. I want city leaders to face this moment with open minds and open hearts, and to think creatively about what they mean by public safety. Right now, we have at best a reactive approach to the many crises we're already in and other deadly threats that we know are heading our way. I teach a class on the climate crisis at BU, and again and again, I've heard many creative reasons for why city and state leaders should do the minimum, wait for the right moment, stick with the status quo. And there are several parallels between the deadly threats of climate change, pandemics, and police brutality, but the one I want to highlight tonight is that.
Anna, your time's up. You have a minute, but please, you can email the council, thanks. Next person who signed up is Piper Winkler, followed by Deb Nicholson.
Piper Winkler, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks so much, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, wonderful, I'm here to speak to Policy Order Seven. I want to thank Councilors Sabrina Wheeler and Zondervan for bringing up this incredibly important motion. I'm in full support of Policy Order Number Seven. I also believe that greater steps need to be taken. I believe that we need to move to full defunding of the Cambridge Police Department, because given the examples that people have brought up over the course of the past few hours about assaults enacted by the Cambridge Police, I think it's clear that this police force works as a racist and classist militia against the interests of this community. And in order to keep all of our community members safe, especially our Black and Brown community members, again, we need to move toward full defunding of the Police Department. And rather than allowing ourselves to stop short at just, you know, using policing to treat certain ills, we need to actually move toward funding social programs, making sure that everybody has access to safe housing.
Thank you, Piper, for your testimony. Is Deb Nicholson on the line? Deb, followed by Elise Vien.
Hi. Okay. My name is Deb Nicholson, I'm at 338 Norfolk Street, and I'm calling in to ask to support Public Policy Order Number Seven. Thanks everyone for sticking around, I know it's been a long night. I believe we must address the root problems, the reasons people find themselves sleeping in places they aren't supposed to, the reasons people are intoxicated in public, the reasons people find themselves desperate and on the brink of despair, before we meet those problems with violence. We cannot solve the problems that we created by not dealing with the housing crisis here in Cambridge, and not adequately funding jobs programs with more police. Cambridge has been a leader on many of these topics in the past, and it is time for us to again lead the way and give other cities proof that compassion works and that Black Lives Matter. Please vote yes on Policy Order Number Seven. Thank you for your time.
Elise Vien is next, followed by Sarah Byrd, followed by Seamus Knight.
Next, we have Joel Greenberg. Joel, please go ahead.
Hi, I hope you can hear me. Thank you so much. I'm Joel, I live on Prospect Street, speaking on Policy Issue Seven. The primary function of the Cambridge Police Department as it exists today is to serve private interests by protecting private property. You don't have to look into your heart to know that it's true, you just have to see how poor folks are treated on Mass App at any time of day, blazing sun or freezing sleep. Some members of the city council hold their seats thanks to generous contributions by the police as well as builders. When these cynical corporate interests have their way, the profits flow. The city is further whitewashed and stripped of culture, and the councilors who aid and abet have full campaign coffers for the next cycle. When the members of this council are beholden to corporate puppeteer, over-general populace, the city is unable to respond to crises like housing our homeless population during a pandemic, or must use a GoFundMe to aid residents displaced by fire, as we saw in December 2016. Thank you.
Next up? Baza. Next up is Simran Verdi.
Simran Verdi, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Simran, continue.
Hi, my name is Simran Verdi. I live at 167 Hampshire Street. I'm speaking in strong support of Policy Seven. I have never given a public comment before or even thought twice to, but this is very important to me, and I'm moved to be here now. The Police Department today has the second highest allocation of the city budget after education. That's above public works, Human Services, Cambridge Health Alliance, and Transportation. While I'm glad to see education come first, I encourage the council to reconsider how the rest of this allocation reflects our city's morals. I urge you to take a moral stance on this and reduce the size of the Police Department. Put the $4.1 million and more of the $65 million police budget toward preventative social services, affordable public housing, and police policies that better serve our community. Let's focus on phasing out the police and reducing the scope of policing. We need new solutions. The US has funded police for so long, backed by fear and very explicit racism against Brown and Black Americans. Let's stop that this minute. Thank you for the time to speak, this is very important to me, and I will be paying attention to the changes made. Thank you.
Next up? Is it Noel Jackson? Or Mike Hunt? Mike Hunt is not there. Rosemary D. Troya?
Rosemary D. Troya, you have the floor.
Rosemary, are you there?
Rosemary D. Troya, you have the floor, please unmute yourself to speak.
I guess we don't see you, but we can come back at the end if you're there. Is Alicia Guggins next, or Ben Roberts?
Jordan Howell, you have the floor, please go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, Jordan.
So my name is Jordan Howell, I live at 257 Pearl Street, apartment one. I would like to express my support of Policy Order Three and Seven. Housing insecurity and police violence, as many speakers have made clear, are intimately linked. Regarding Policy Order Three, I believe that the Affordable Housing Overlay is a way to address our housing crisis in Cambridge. Building affordable housing across our city is a necessary step to combat persistent economic inequality in general and racial inequality in particular. Regarding Policy Order Seven, I would urge the Cambridge City Council to listen to the people across this country who have taken to the streets after the police murdered George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. We cannot pretend that racist police violence is not a major problem in Cambridge. We must abolish the police. As Black leaders in Cambridge and across the country have made clear, there are alternatives. The well-being and safety of Black, Brown, and Indigenous people in our community is at stake. As a preliminary step, I urge the council to block the Cambridge Police Department's request for an additional $4.1 million. We must work with Black, Brown, and Indigenous people.
Thank you for your testimony. Next person is Kyle Mercado. Or is it Yee Lin, or?
Kyle Mercado, are you on the Zoom?
Kyle, can you hear us? I don't think we see you anymore. Is Jude Gobbin the next person?
Next up, we have Mo Barbosa. Mo, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Mo Barbosa, I am an expat, Black man from Cambridge. Just want to say that reforming policing is a good thing to do, but police have been the tool of a racist society, not the cause of racism. I can tell this by just listening to every third or fourth street that people mention that they're from. It's the street where the police have been called on me for walking down the street or my friends for just walking down the street. So if we want to do something, we should actually be addressing the roots of the racism that the police are often used to enforce. Some of the reforms that might make sense include banning chokeholds, making it mandatory for intervention when excessive force is being used, changing the use of force doctrine, teaching de-escalation as a primary intervention, changing the police contract, making changes in hiring and training, and definitely engaging in true community oversight, perhaps even reaching in to create a chief and have a commission-
Thanks, Mo, for your testimony. You can please email the rest.
Will do.
Jude Gobbin, are you there? Followed by Gabriella Fee.
Jude, please go ahead. You have the floor. Jude, I see you have your hand raised. Do you need to unmute yourself? You have the floor.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead, Jude.
I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Jude. I live at 154 Auburn Street, and I'm in favor of the order. And I also want to, I'll be sending written testimony. I also want to thank the City Council for creating this historic night where the people of Cambridge can speak up and declare that Black Lives Matter and that abolition and reparations are possible and that we can do this. So I thank all of the speakers. Y'all are tight. And the organizers that made it possible to get on the Zoom and to prepare the testimony. I also want to say I'm with Families for Justice is Healing, and we're organizing to make sure that no new women's prison is built and no new regional, and then regional lockup isn't built. And we're organizing all together. And when we fight, we win. So I look forward to seeing you on the streets and in the- and, right, and in the voting blocks. Okay, thanks. Love y'all.
Gabriella, followed by Rachel Molinar.
Hello, my name is Gabriella Fee, and I live at 5 Craigie Circle. I've never given public comment before, but I would like to speak in support of Policy Issue Number 7. I want to advocate that not only the proposed $4.1 million increase, but the entire existing Police Budget be redirected away from policing and instead into critical social services that support Black and Brown communities. I believe strongly that we need to invest our resources into education, public health, and affordable housing. These are the commitments that produce a strong and vibrant community, and Cambridge must divest at every possible opportunity from surveillance, criminalization, and white supremacy. Police reform programs have proven inadequate, and I support Black community leaders in their call to defund and abolish Police Departments and replace them with community-led public safety initiatives. I support Policy Issue 7, the abolition of the Cambridge Police Department and all future efforts to this effect. I will be paying close attention to how our city responds to this call for change. Thank you, City Council, for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person we have is Flora Wang.
Flora, please go ahead. Flora, you are unmuted, and you have the floor. Please go ahead.
Flora?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Flora Wang. I am a resident at 338 Hurley Street in Cambridge, Massachusetts. As a person of color, I feel deeply unsafe living two blocks away from the police station. I think right now the entire state, and therefore the entire country, is watching us now to make a historic decision in order to not only not continue to attribute more money, $4.1 million, that'd be going to education, public services, low-income housing, but also vastly defund and abolish the $65 million that we are pouring to our police right now. And as we are looking at Cambridge as a beacon of what is education and what it should be forthcoming technology, we want to be ahead of this and not behind. Black Lives Matter, and please, we should listen to the Brown and Black voices in our community to make sure that we are standing up for justice, their lives, and their simple humanity, that all of us should be able to exist without fear. Thank you very much.
Next up is Rachel Molinar, followed by Michael Donaldack, followed by Heather Hoffman.
Rachel Molinar, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rachel Molinar. I'm a resident of Cambridge at 8 Carlyle Street. I'm calling in support of Policy Order Number 7. I frankly find it absurd that we're even considering an increase in the Police Budget, and it's incredibly embarrassing for a city that calls itself progressive. I think this needs to be followed by further defunding of the police with an ultimate goal of their abolition, and that this needs to be paired with the building of intentional systems that actually support and protect the community. Lastly, I would like to say that all of this needs to be led by Black voices from the community. Thank you.
Next up? Do we have Michael?
Next up, we have Heather Hoffman. Heather, go ahead, please.
Hi, Heather Hoffman, 213 Hurley Street. I would like to talk about something no one else has, and that is extending funding for meals programs. In the new climate of us being a part in everything, these programs really, really need this help. And you should consider that it may well need to go past September, but I'm glad to see this. It's incredibly important and incredibly needed. To all of the people who are speaking for the first time, come back. We need you. Pay attention. Watch what's going on. And with respect to the housing overlay and policing, what problems are we trying to solve? What are the best ways to solve them? And are we redoing that, or are we just doing stuff that sounds good? Thank you.
Next up? Is Kyle Mercado. Kyle, are you there?
Kyle Mercado, you have the floor. Please go ahead. Kyle, you're unmuted under K-A space M. Please go ahead.
Not there? We'll keep coming after you. Michael? Is Michael Donaldack next, or Charles Hatfield? Is it?
Next will be Mackenzie Bullard. Mackenzie, you have the floor. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name's Mackenzie Bullard. I live at 54 Webster Avenue in Cambridge, Massachusetts. I'm here in support of Policy Number 7, but this is not enough. We need to abolish the Cambridge Police Department and take the lead on proactively reforming our civil workers and community at large. The council must take the 60-plus million we spend on policing Black communities and people who are homeless and reallocate these funds in the following ways by the hands of Community Budget Coalition that is overwhelmingly including Black, Brown, and low-income communities. One, affordable housing and housing services for homeless population. Two, access treatment for substance use disorder and harm reduction services like peer recovery coaches and clean needle exchanges. Three, supporting local artists and businesses in this community. This should include opportunities to fund public art, too. To create college fund for our Black communities and create economic opportunities straight out of high school for trade school. Finally, in terms of Policy Number 8 and 7, the US Constitution was signed into law at the same time Black people were considered three-fifths of a human-
Thank you for your testimony. John Pitkin? We don't see John. How about Lisa Hollywood? Oh, she already went. Okay. Lizette Williams?
Andreas Gorowicz, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Hello, hi, hi. Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, yep, I've been, didn't realize I would be coming on at all. Yeah, Andreas Gorowicz, I'm at 11 Reservoir Street in Cambridge. I'd just like to concur with most of the other speakers that Policy 7 does not do nearly enough. Reallocating only $4 million out of the $66 million is pretty much insulting, especially considering the unanimity of the views we have heard these past few hours or several hours. We need to both radically defund the Cambridge Police, but not only radically defund the Cambridge Police, but move towards disbanding CPD and replace them with restorative justice models. The proposed budget of $66 million is clearly outrageous as it far surpasses the funds desperately needed for better affordable housing, public housing, education, community organization, healthcare, and other social services. Beyond this, mass decarceration, abolishing-
Andreas, you can email the remainder of your comments. Thank you. Up next? Do we have Danielle Usmani?
Danielle Usmani, unfortunately, you need to update your Zoom software. If you are able to come back in, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you again.
Is Anur Isaa next, or Danielle? Danielle Heims Waldron?
Danielle Heims Waldron, you have the floor. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Danielle Heims Waldron. I currently live at 1095 Cambridge Street. I'm a long-term Cambridge resident and CRLS graduate. I've never given public comment before, but I am here today to oppose the $4.1 million increase to the Police Budget and advocate for its full reallocation. As author Alex Vitale wrote, quote, "While we are not using police to manage slavery or colonialism today, we are using police to manage the problems that our very unequal system has produced." If we pour $4.1 million more dollars into the police, we are communicating that police surveillance, criminalization, and their broad crisis management duties better serve our Black communities than investing in education, public health, and other social services like housing. There has never been a more important time for the council to affirm that the voices, the safety, and the futures of Black community members are a priority for the city. This is only a first step, but a critical one. Thank you for the time to speak. I will be paying close attention to the council's vote.
Next up?
Next will be Corinne Espinosa.
Corinne, are you there?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Corinne Espinosa. I'm in support of Policy Order Number 7. Further, I do not want Cambridge to spend $66 million on policing in fiscal year '21. We need to defund the Police Department and move that funding to Human Services. I'm a police and prison abolitionist, and I honor the Black women whose work got us to this point. I urge councillors and listeners to review the resources at 8toabolition.com. Cambridge likes to imagine our Police Department causes less harm to the Black community compared to other Police Departments. While receiving less public attention on a daily basis, our police harass Black and Brown youth and adults. We've heard testimony from people telling us how the police do not make them feel safe. The people's money should not finance harm to the community. Thank you.
Is Beth McColdrick next? Marisa Press?
All done. That concludes everyone who signed up in advance.
Okay, so we don't have, there's no one on public comment anymore?
We do have one person who was skipped over, Gabrielle Dombe. Can we hear from them?
Yes. Gabrielle, are you online?
Gabrielle Dombe, you have the floor. Please go ahead.
My name is Gabrielle Dombe. I live at 19 Garden Street. I'm speaking in support of Policy Order 7. I have never given public comment before, but this is very important to me, so I'm motivated to be here now. I support complete defunding of police because I do not think the security of private individuals or private property should be amongst the highest values of our culture. We must take the risks of sharing the world with our fellows. We cannot live in a culture of fear and total security. I support funding and vastly expanding public resources. Thank you for the time to speak. This is very important to me, and I will be paying attention to the changes made.
Is there anyone else? Who we have who signed up and we skipped over? You don't see anyone? Anthony, just double-check. Counselor?
Thank you, ma'am. There are some people who raised their hands. Should we allow them to speak?
The hands that are currently raised are people who spoke already?
Okay.
Okay. Naomi, go ahead.
There is a Gabriel Rogin and Jane Casmark, which I believe we may have passed over before?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I will do Gabriel first. Gabriel, you have the floor. Please go ahead.
Oh, hi, yes, thank you. I'm also here to strongly support Policy Order Number 7 as written. I live at 29 Putnam Avenue. In 2018, when I was, my first year living in Cambridge, I saw the video of Cambridge police beating up a Black Harvard College student on Mass Avenue. I'm sure all of you saw it. The student was naked, unarmed, and clearly in need of mental health services. Instead of receiving support, the police tackled him to the concrete, jammed his head into the ground, and punched him repeatedly in the stomach. This was tragic but unsurprising, given the police have a long history of racism and violence here in Cambridge and across the country. I see them regularly bullying people living with homelessness, especially people of color in Central Square, and it disgusts me. Cambridge does not need more money for police. Please do not increase the Police Budget, but rather dramatically decrease it and redirect the funds to the proven alternatives that so many of my fellow residents have spoken to today. Please cut police fundings by millions more. We should stop funding these bullies.
Thank you, Gabriel, for your testimony. You can email the remainder of your comments to our City Council, to the City Council. So next, Jane Casmark, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks so much. My name is Jan Ketchmerrick. I live at 3 Riverside Place in Cambridge. Calling to support Policy Order Number 7. This is my first time giving public comment. The murder of George Floyd and our current political environment is what motivated me to advocate for, you know, tangible action and real change to help my Black and Brown neighbors. Since moving to Cambridge in 2002, I've observed that our police presence has grown and has surely received sufficient funding already. So to better support our communities of color and to be a national leader in policing for racial equity, I think we should redirect this $4.1 million to preventive social services, economic empowerment initiatives, housing, healthcare, and other supportive services. I thank you again for your time.
We have two more individuals. Susan Hyde, if you're there, please go ahead.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. Greetings, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Susan Hyde. I live at 180 Pearl Street. I rise in support of Policy Orders 3 and 7. In particular, I wish to bring your attention to military hardware in possession of the Cambridge Police Department. A quick and easy internet search led me to understanding that the Cambridge Police Department is in possession of 25 rifles, millimeter 5.56, the Department of Defense, under Program 1033. I would request that you discover and ask and tell us, have these rifles been used in the city of Cambridge? Why do we have them? What are they for? Thank you very much. Good night.
Good evening. Thank you for your testimony. Is there one more person? Is it Gabriel? Gabriel Oppenheimer, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Gabriel, please go ahead.
My name is Gabe Oppenheimer. I was born and raised at Fresh Pond, at 87 Fresh Pond Parkway, but have since moved to the Amherst area to attend UMass. This is my first time giving public comment. I'm speaking in favor of Public Orders 7 and 3, and I want to echo the other speakers urging the City Council to reallocate $4.1 million and further parts of the police budget towards programs that will directly benefit Brown and Black members of our community, as well as low-income members. I ask that the decisions and how this reallocation takes place center the voices of those community members. Furthermore, I ask the City Council publicly post the data on attendance of this meeting. How many people are here? Thank you.
That's, we have one more person, and it's Renee Donaldack, or no?
Sorry, Renee Donaldack would have needed to update their Zoom software, so we're unable to call on that person.
Okay. The damn Zoom software. Anyone else? Who signed up and we didn't get to? Just want to confirm, triple-check. No one?
So wrap.
It's no one? Okay, we've gone through the whole list? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to recess the meeting until Wednesday, June 10th, at 5:30.
Motion to recess?
Wait, Madam Mayor, do we have to close public comment?
We do have to close public comment, so we'll do two roll calls.
Move to close public comment, after which?
Yes, Counselor, on the Counselor Simmons' motion to close public comment, we'll do a roll call.
On closing public comment, Counselor Carlow.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan. Absent. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
And now on Counselor Zandervan's motion to recess.
Can you not hear me?
Oh, Counselor Nolan is there, so Counselor Nolan was there. But it's-
Sorry, yes.
You can hear, we hear you. We'll for the next roll call. So the next roll call is to recess, to our, to our special meeting that's on our calendars to finish any unfinished business, and that's for June 10th at 5:30.
On the motion, Counselor Carlow.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zandervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor McGovern?
Can you just, for any of the public that is still watching, and there were a lot of folks who said that this was their first, their first public comment, probably, maybe that means their first time watching the council. Can you just explain what we just did in terms of recessing and closing public comments? So people understand that we will not be having public comment next time? So that people don't get confused?
Sure, so in the beginning of the meeting, we, given the, we wanted to get through all the public comment. We referred all the business items, including the policy orders that folks were commenting on for a discussion on Wednesday, and so we will not have public comment on Wednesday because we've concluded public comment, and we're just continuing the meeting. And usually you need, we would do it tomorrow, but you need at least 48 hours. And so that's why the meeting is, we called it earlier today for 5:30 in anticipation that we wouldn't, it'd be difficult to get through the entire agenda by the rest of tonight.
Thank you, Madam.
No problem. Anything else? From my colleagues? Okay, well, we already recessed, so thank you, everyone who signed up today, and I will see my colleagues in very shortly. Good night.
Good night.
Night.